Okay, we're gonna get started.
Ooh. Love that quiet.
Good morning and welcome to the Washington State University Board of Regents March Meeting. We're here in the tri-cities and excited to kick off today's meeting. We had an eventful meeting yesterday with a lot of committee reports that the board will provide summaries of in this meeting. And today is special for a lot of reasons. Not only is it Women's History Month and there's a lot of great female energy in this room today, and there was yesterday as well, but it is President Schultz's last board meeting. And I think that I heard that you had attended over 100 board meetings in your career. So we look forward to beginning the celebration of Kirk's legacy. And I'm sure he's feeling pretty excited about the last of over 100. So with that, I'd like to begin with acknowledging, we really feel that it's important to ensure that we begin every meeting by honoring and mentioning the WSU locations statewide are on the homelands of Native peoples who have lived in this region from time immemorial. And we express our deepest respect for and gratitude toward these original and current caretakers. For the record, I'd like our board assistant to please take roll call.
Lisa Shauer.
Present.
Jen Ramos.
Good morning, everyone. Here.
Marie Dickinson.
Present.
Brett Blankenship.
Present. Thanks.
Rike Serna.
Present.
Sam Hunt.
Present.
Doug Pika.
Present.
Laura Powell.
Present.
Mady McDonald.
Present.
Anna Vogel.
Here.
Howard Wright.
Good morning. Present.
Thank you. We will begin our meeting, as we begin every board meeting, with public comment. It's an opportunity for the public to address the board directly. I have three individuals who have signed up for public comment. Again, just as a reminder, if you're interested in providing public comments to the board, you can do it in multiple ways. You can participate in the board meeting by providing us feedback. You can send an email, which the best way to do that is to just email regents@wsu.edu. Or you can reach out to our board assistant, Tracy Jorodol. I do want to also note that the board will not discuss nor debate topics raised in public comments. It's not because the board does not value the comments from the public, but in this moment, we want to be able to hear what our public wants to share with the board, and then we need the time to be able to follow up. So any clarifying questions, the regents may go ahead and engage in. For speakers who are in person, I will announce your name when it's your opportunity to speak. At that time, please come to the front of the room and sit at the presenter's table. For speakers that are participating virtually, we'll ask that you remain muted until I call your name. At that time, we'll unmute you, and you can provide comment. I'd like for you to try and keep your comments around two minutes, and we have three requests right now. So the first person that has signed up to speak is Colin Bannister. Is Colin with us today? Okay. And maybe we'll move to the next individual that'd like to speak, and then Colin, I'll come back to you. Isla Bonalia. I know I did not say that correctly, so I'm hoping you can please introduce yourself and share your name.
Bonia. Bonia.
Thank you. Regent Serna. Go ahead.
I'll start. Good morning, everybody. My name is Isala Bonia. I serve as the Director of Legislative Affairs for ASWU. I'm here today because students across our state and right here at WCU Vancouver are at risk of losing access to higher education. SB 5785, introduced by Senator June Robinson, would allow students or institutions to raise tuition by an additional 5% while gutting the Washington College Grant completely. This very program that we're nationally recognized for and make college possible for 100 students statewide. More than 18,000 students could lose their financial aid entirely or see devastating cuts. This would slam the door on low-income students who are already struggling to afford college. Right now, this bill would slash that 25%. We're at the point of fighting for this qualification to keep this program from getting cut. At WCU Vancouver, 50% of our students rely on financial aid. This means hundreds of students on our campus alone could be forced to drop out or take a crushing debt. We cannot let this happen. I'm not just here as a student lobbyist. I'm here as a student who wouldn't be here without the Washington College Grant. I'm a first-generation college student, like 50% of our students at WCU. WCU could not have been reached for me or others without this support. We have our students email legislators and desperately do their best to not let this happen, but I want to ask you guys this: how many other students will be denied the same opportunity if this bill passes? WSU's land-grant university built on the promise of providing affordable, accessible education, but over the past decade, everybody in your position has raised tuition by 25%. This university must really start taking an actual stance for students. We really need you all to publicly oppose this bill and reject further tuition increases, advocate for full funding for the Washington College Grant, so no student lose their ability to afford college, and hopefully use your influence as institutional leaders to tell lawmakers that getting this financial aid is unacceptable. Choice is clear for all of us. Either WCU stands with students or becomes another institution that prizes the matter of their future. It was my understanding when I got into WSU that cougs take care of cougs, cougs help each other out, and so much pride is held here by me and others that I want to keep. So please oppose SB 5785 and fight for the students who keep WCU running and make WCU what it is. Students are scared, and at the end of the day, we just need to be able to count on you guys. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. I really appreciate what you shared and how you were very clear about what you need the board to do. So thank you for being with us this morning. Colin, I see that you are online now, so go ahead and share your feedback.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, members of the board. My name is Colin Bannister, and I serve as the Director of Legislative Affairs for ASWU. I serve and lobby on student needs at our state Capitol full-time. A bill that I want to bring all your attention to comes from Senator June Robinson, who's Chair of the Senate Ways and Means Committee. Senate Bill 5785 would allow institutions to raise tuition by 5% more than they currently are allowed by law and would deeply cut financial aid for the Washington College Grant. 100,000 students statewide receive the Washington College Grant, and out of this number, tens of thousands could get significant cuts to their financial aid or write out denied any aid. As of current, a student at 65% of the median family income receives a full grant. This bill would lower that to 25% median family income. This would be devastating to low-income students, and as ASWU would ask that this board and institution oppose further tuition increases and defunding of financial aid. I personally, as a student, would not be here without the Washington College Grant. WCU would be too expensive for me as a first-generation student. As a land-grant university, we are supposed to offer accessible education for all. This board has already cumulatively raised tuition by about 25% in the last decade as our enrollment continues to be low, lower than the university has had since the early 2000s. The state budget deficits and cuts ahead will be challenging, but I would ask that as an institution, you prioritize your land-grant mission and affordability to students. Supporting higher tuition and less financial aid would tell students that to go to college, they either have to come from the upper class or enter crippling debt. Be the university in our state that leads. Don't cut cougs out of their dreams and futures. Please help oppose this bill and support your students. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Colin. Really clear message. Appreciate both what you and Isla addressed the board with. All right. William Ingles, welcome back.
Good morning. I am Bill Ingles, WSU Graduate Writing Center Consultant and a member of Environmental Sustainability Alliance's Subcommittee, Fossil Free WSU. I would like to begin by thanking you, President Schultz, and members of the board for your interest in and support for the cause of fossil fuel divestment at WSU. Under your leadership, President Schultz, WSU developed a commitment-to-sustainability plan and a system-wide sustainability task force. Also, the WSU Foundation has recently taken steps to offer donors an environmental, social, and governance investing options for their donations. Of course, this is far from a commitment to divest the consolidated endowment from fossil fuels, and we will continue our advocacy. Regarding this, a few updates on our complaint letter to be sent to State Attorney General Brown on the Foundation's lack of compliance with the Uniform Prudent Management of Institutional Funds Act. We plan to announce the letter in the Washington State Magazine later this month and to encourage donors to request that their gift not be invested in fossil fuels. And I spoke briefly in person with the Attorney General immediately after his Foley Institute talk last month on the WSU Pullman campus. I informed him about our complaint letter indicating that we would be sending it to him on Earth Day, April 22nd. Thank you for your time and attention today.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, I don't have anyone else that has signed up to provide public comment. Again, if you'd like to address the board, there's multiple ways. I would suggest that you go ahead and take a look at the WSU Board of Regents website, and you'll find out information on how to reach us. So we're going to move into reports from leadership. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge that at the table that I'm sitting at, we have both our incoming President, President Cantwell, and we have our President, who is soon to retire, President Schultz. So appreciate you both being here today and really appreciate the transition that's happening here. To my left, Vice Chair Ramos is about to step into this role as well. So there are a lot of transitions happening at WSU, and it's an exciting time to see some opportunities that are in front of us. I want to share a bit about what the regents have been up to over the last couple months, and there has been a lot of activity. So I'd like to begin with the work that the regents have done at the legislative level. So in Olympia, Regent Vogel was the first to head to Olympia for the COOG Day at the Capitol on January 27th, which is an annual day of legislative advocacy. WSU's Student Government Council organizes this event, which is a collaborative effort with the Associated Students of Washington State University and the Graduate and Professional Student Association. The effort allows for our WSU students to have the opportunity to meet with state legislators and to discuss higher education priorities. I think that it was this day that Regent Hunt was standing in front of the doors. Were you welcoming students in this day? It was an impressive photo. So if you haven't seen that, Regent Hunt is standing in front of the doors, and there are hundreds of students in front of him. So not only was this an exciting day to have both Regent Hunt there to welcome students to the legislature, but also to have Regent Vogel there.
Regent Vogel was there to join in, yes.
Yeah. It was very exciting. And then we had not long after, Regent Pika and Regent Serna that made their way to the Capitol for the Regents and Trustees Day. They were joined by representatives from Washington's public universities, community, and technical colleges, and again, advocating as a higher education group convening to share what is challenges that the university and higher ed are facing and opportunities for support and collaboration together in addressing some of those issues. So appreciate all four of you for being at the Capitol in July, sharing what WSU needs. I also just want to take a moment and just really demonstrate appreciation for our external and governmental relations team. They are not only at the state really advocating for WSU, but they are in our nation's capital. They're doing a phenomenal job of not only providing us information, but staying in touch with all of our colleges and campuses to ensure that WSU's voice is loud and proud, and we're really being clear about what we need and how we can be supportive of the challenges facing the state and the nation as it relates to our budget. I want to also mention that we had a pretty big celebration on February 6th, where we held a special meeting of the board in Pullman, where we announced and unanimously supported the appointment of our 12th President, our incoming President Cantwell, who will be on campus, ready to go April 1st. We also had Regent Ramos, who serves as the Regent Representative on the WSU Foundation Investment Committee, participate in their February 12th meeting. The regents held a full-day retreat on February 17th. It was a virtual retreat, and we did spend the entire day working through our budget. And again, want to thank our finance and budget team for the hard work that they did to help us through that education. The draft budget document is on the WSU website. I would encourage anyone that's interested in taking a look at what that document's continuing to evolve and to include. This is a part of the commitment by the university for increased fiscal transparency. There is a lot of information in there, and there has been a lot of hard work to get us to this point, and really, again, want to demonstrate my gratitude to that team for helping us walk through what was a long day. We do anticipate taking action May 21st. So we have one more in-person board meeting in April, and then the budget will move in front of the board May 21st for approval in a virtual board meeting. On February 19th, Regent Blankenship, Serna, Pika, and Vogel attended the Champion Center, a facility that will serve every student-athlete, providing centralized academic, mental, and professional development support. Rumor has it, they then went on to the basketball game, and some are alumni of a pretty, it sounds like fun, basketball camp that has occurred. So you may see pictures of Regent Pika, Serna, and Blankenship as alumni of, is it Cage?
Hooger Cage.
Hooger Cage camp. So stay tuned for pictures of the alumni. I want to just pause for a moment and just kind of transition from where the board has been and the work that has been done to being able to start what I think we'll refer to as the Festival of Kirk Schultz, which begins today. We were going to have a sash ready for you.
Thank God. Don't.
Instead, we'll just lead to the buildup that will happen throughout the next couple months, and it starts here today. And so I just want to really share how much I have appreciated the partnership, the time that you've spent with me, the patience you've had with me over the last almost two years. This is a really significant moment today, and it's the culmination of nine years of leadership here. We'll continue to have the benefit of President Schultz's expertise over the next several months and through the next year, and hopefully even further beyond that, showing up at events and being able to cheer on our COOG Nation. I want to begin with reading a proclamation. I spent some time trying to think about all the different ways that I could express my gratitude and be able to share Kirk's legacy, and this, I think, a proclamation really is a great way to summarize a lot of what President Schultz's commitment and passion for WSU has been, and incredibly positive impact on our community. So I'm going to read what is a two-page proclamation, and then I will open it up to the board. Let me begin by saying, I'm reading a commendation recognizing President Schultz's service. At the conclusion, I will then ask for a vote to adopt this resolution by the Board of Regents. Whereas Kirk H. Schultz has served with distinction as the 11th president of the Washington State University since 2016. And whereas President Schultz has guided the university through significant challenges, including the COVID-19 pandemic, demonstrating resilience, grace, and an unwavering commitment to the welfare of students, faculty, and staff, ensuring WSU continues to fulfill its mission during uncertain times. And whereas, as WSU's Chief Executive Officer, President Schultz has provided exceptional leadership, strengthening the university's dedication to its land-grant mission by advancing educational access, research excellence, and public service, while also serving as a strong and influential voice for WSU at the state and federal levels, securing critical funding and elevating the university's presence on key issues affecting higher education. And whereas, under President Schultz's leadership, WSU surpassed $400 million in research and development expenditures, consistently ranking in the top 10 nationally for the U.S. Department of Agriculture expenditures, ensuring the number-one national ranking in 2017 and 2023. And whereas, President Schultz has been a tireless champion of educational access and affordability, with nearly 70,000 degrees and certificates awarded to WSU students during his tenure, a consistent decline in average student debt, and more than one-third of WSU students paying no tuition, reflecting significant progress in affordability. Whereas, President Schultz has strengthened WSU's outreach and service by expanding meaningful community partnerships, exemplified by his commitment to Native American students and tribes through the resigning of the WSU's Memorandum of Understanding with regional tribal partners and the adoption of a policy on tribal engagement, consultation, and consent, making WSU one of the few higher education institutions in the nation to formalize a framework, including training for faculty and staff, ensuring ethical and respectful research partnership with tribal nations. And whereas, President Schultz has expanded WSU's global engagement, including establishing with six African universities to broaden educational access, enhance food security, and promote health equity, and initiating WSU's first dual doctoral program with the University of Nairobi, advancing deeper academic collaboration and cross-cultural exchange. And whereas, President Schultz has been a vital force in advancing WSU's philanthropic and fundraising efforts, securing more than $150 million annually for three consecutive years, including a record-setting $167.9 million in private gifts in 2023, resulting in substantial investments in scholarship, research initiatives, and infrastructure improvements to benefit students, faculty, communities, and future generations of cougs to come. Whereas, President Schultz has been a steady advocate for enhancing WSU's physical and academic infrastructure, helping to secure over $665 million in major capital investments that have modernized research facilities, expanded educational spaces, and strengthened the university's ability to serve students, faculty, and communities across the state. Whereas, President Schultz has been a dedicated champion for intercollegiate athletics at Washington State University, playing a key role in preserving the university's competitive standing by leading efforts to rebuild Pac-12 Conference through the inclusion of Boise State University, Colorado State University, Fresno State University, Gonzaga University, San Diego State University, and Utah State University, thereby safeguarding WSU's national visibility, athletic opportunities, and financial sustainability. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Washington State University Board of Regents expresses its profound appreciation to Kirk H. Schultz for his steadfast leadership, exemplary service, and lasting contributions to Washington State University, its students, faculty, staff, alumni, and the broader WSU community. Be it further resolved that the board acknowledges the significant impact President Schultz has made on the university and beyond, which extends, we extend our best wishes for his future endeavors and recognize the enduring legacy of leadership that he has left on WSU, one marked by optimism, humility, and a deep commitment to empowering those around him. This commendation is being presented now to the Board of Regents for adoption. I move that the Board of Regents adopt this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, President Schultz. So now you need to transition to the middle. Regent, we would, go ahead. You want? Yes. So we would like to each begin, as I mentioned, the Festival of Kirk Schultz, by sharing with you just a little bit about our experience working with you, and Regent Powell is going to maybe share.
That'd be nice.
Okay, thank you, Regent, for being clear about that.
I'm going to do two parts, because my first job is to give you this card from us.
Thank you.
And we have a bottle of wine, and this is a very special bottle of wine, because at our last
Yes, so we would like to each begin, as I mentioned, the Festival of Kirk Schultz, by sharing with you just a little bit about our experience working with you. And Regent Powell is going to maybe share. Okay, thank you, Regent Powell, for being clear about that.
I'm going to do two parts because my first job is to give you this card from us.
Thank you.
And we have a bottle of wine, and this is a very special bottle of wine, because at our last retreat that was hosted by Ted Basler at the San Michelle Winery Headquarters, he gave us all the great option of 30% off anything in their inventory. So I've learned a lot of wine since I've been in the Tri-Cities, but I'm far from being an expert. So I said, Ted, pick me out some really good ones. And this one, which is the limited edition, was one of them that he selected. So this is from us to you in recognition of a fine aging of nine years. But that's not all I'm going to say. So I sort of want to kick off the opportunity for the comments. And, you know, one of the things, one of the first things that happened, also that was sort of near and dear to my heart, was when shortly after your appointment, which happened to be here in the Tri-Cities nine years ago, we took you on a, UNO, on a tour around the country, around the state by private airplane that was donated, so that you could see all the campuses and reach out and touch, you know, the community. So at one of the early town halls, somebody spoke up from the audience and said, well, what are you going to do about the branch campuses? And Kirk looked at them and said, we call them all our campuses. There's no designation difference. And that was the beginning of what ultimately, of the whole One WSU concept. When I first joined this board in 2014, we had a term, One WSU. What One WSU meant at the time was that we all, all the students, our students received the same diploma. This is different from University of Washington, where each campus gives their own diploma. So everybody graduated with a WSU diploma. However, that's pretty much where One WSU stopped. There was little collaboration between the campuses, even amongst shared governance groups. There was little mention at our meetings about anything other than the Pullman Campus. And Kirk really worked hard to enhance those collaborations, to really make WSU what it really could be by pulling together all of our resources, working together to build a greater whole for the state of Washington, and of course, for our students that are so important to us. And, you know, it's, he had to do it gradually because it was pretty revolutionary. It's come a long way. COVID put a kink in the whole process. And while there's still work to do, because this is a, sort of was a revolutionary change, the benefits are already paying off, and we have much more collaboration across the campuses. And I'm just so pleased that now I sit here and listen to shared governance reports, and all of the shared governance groups have representation from across the entire enterprise, across the entire system. So we, you know, while there's still work to do, we have become a system, and we will be continuing to evolve as a system. So, and in fact, we actually have, the chair of our faculty senate is from Vancouver this year. So anyway, I think it's been a remarkable change, and for me, it's a very important part of your legacy, and I personally appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Well, I'll jump in next. Kirk and I, I was coming in as chair-elect to the faculty senate when Kirk was onboarding as our president, and I came to that table, a frustrated but passionate faculty member with some chips on my shoulder. And the thing that was amazing about Kirk is he, just by the way he responded, I eventually learned to, instead of coming in passionate and upset, to come in passionate and ready to propose solutions. And so instead of saying, we're really unhappy about this, I learned to say, we as faculty believe that we could contribute to improving this situation. And it was solely by the way he led that I learned to change how I approached things. But the thing that made it worthwhile was when I came in and said that, he would say, well, the person that's working on that right now is this vice president, and I'll let them know you're coming. I'll suggest to them that they put a faculty member on your committee. So he opened doors over and over again between the faculty and the senior administration, doors that weren't there when I walked in the door as chair-elect. And I've listened to a couple of comments from Chris and Betsy and different people about how nice it is to come into an institution where the culture is to cooperate. The culture is to bring, don't suppress your passions, but bring them forward in positive ways, bring them forward with a commitment to find solutions. And I think I grew from an unhappy faculty member to somebody that really genuinely cares and is committed to this institution. And it is solely from the way that you were able to quietly change my attitude from passionate and unhappy to passionate and proactive, and I appreciate that so much. And I am not the only one. I think there's a long line of people that came through the senate, people that had various leadership roles, people that were just plain faculty. I remember you told us once that you had an hour set aside a week where you would just listen to an unhappy faculty member and just hear them out and try to see what was going on, and your influence on the people on the institution has been profound and greatly appreciated.
If I can add to that, sorry, did I slip on you or anything? That focus on people certainly has been one of your hallmarks, President Schultz. But what I'm really inspired, and I just can't find the perfect word at the moment, but your quiet generosity extends not only to people, the door opening to your personal resources, how you funded things quietly behind the scenes, but your generosity with your family and your commitment. And, you know, NOEL is a gift to Washington State University, as well as the talents of your sons, Tim and Andrew, your commitment to your family legacy and sharing all of your family with Washington State University has been just inspiring. And I know behind the scenes, you're quietly generous, and that legacy of generosity and inclusion is part of our culture. So thank you for all of your leadership.
I'd like to add on to that because I think we've got a package deal. We not only got President Schultz, we also got NOEL, and WSU's benefited greatly from the two of you and everything that you've given to the university, and will continue to do so. But the one thing I want to point out is that when I joined the board in March of 2020, it was just in time for COVID. And so, and it seemed like every year we come from one crisis to another. I just really want to tell you how much I appreciated your steadiness and leadership. I'm sure there were more than a few nights there when you were thinking like, what am I doing here? Because it was, you seemed to go from one crisis to another, but, you know, you guided us with a steady hand, and I really appreciate all of that, and I appreciate your service to the university, and I just want to thank you so much.
My last.
No. No, no.
What'd you like to me?
Well, I can go. My contribution to Kirk Fest is, I have the honor, I have the honor of having been at your first board meeting.
Oh, I was afraid somebody was going to bring this up.
As well as, as well as the last, I was the first Regent. You're welcome to the board, but unlike some of my colleagues, I enjoyed the position of new Regent for several years, and it was, it was a nice post. But I got to watch our new president sort of expose me to the fluidity of higher ed, people come and go a lot in academia, pro posts come and go, deans come and go, and faculty move around, but we all try to stay with the higher calling of educating young people. Kirk, unfortunately, or fortunately, had, as he was installed, had to endure following almost a mythical legend, and I call it the ghost of Elson, where a very popular person was taken from us, and the new guy had to come in and try to function with his vision. But we brought the new fiscal order to this university, installed workday, and as soon as we were underway up that, as mentioned before, the COVID years hit. And now, then we were in survival mode, but not all bad. We enhanced our online presence. We were able to do distant learning and stayed in business, and we're still here. So one of the greater things that we all try to do is leave every, everything we touch better than we found it. And I think we can all attest to that for Washington State University. And in spite of all that backdrop, nationwide, we've entered into, and it's been this way for several years, what I would call a culture of cruelty, where people say very mean things without thinking of it or the impact of it. But in spite of that backdrop of culture, we've had a president that practiced a culture of kindness. And that is one of the greatest legacies. With all that, we can all together say, go Cougs.
Kirk, there's many things I could say that I want to highlight, too. We met in Spokane, and you were new, and I was working for what was an aspiring partner to WSU at Seattle Children's, and I was impressed with you right from the start. And, you know, Elson Floyd, there's a lot, appropriately, a lot of attention, his helping or leading launching. As a leader, I wonder what's harder, to launch or to, how do you make this thing work? And it's fitting on the 10th anniversary of the medical school where we are, and I just, I take my hat off. That's a sign of leadership. The other is just how you represent the institution, and how I've always felt comfortable and at times inspired by what you're seeing, like, and just happy to be associated with you in that regard. And one particular moment stands out. We were at the Amazon Sphere with downtown Seattle with the former Regents and the current Regents. I was new with my wife, and I remember getting in the car and saying, Kirk Schultz, I mean, how authentic, how in command he was. He used no notes, and he made everybody leave that room feeling so good about where WSU was and so comfortable with the leadership that we had in you. And I just want to thank you.
Okay. So Kirk, when you became president, I was just entering high school.
You can stop right there.
And I don't say that to make everyone in the room feel old, but I think it provides some context around how you've really been the leader and the face for WSU for so many young people. And I think that you've really brought a stability to this institution that, you know, for as long, I mean, for so many people, you are WSU, this is all that I've known. When I first met you, I had just been appointed as a Regent, and I was very nervous because I wasn't, you know, sure what kind of space I'd be stepping into. And I was really shocked by, I mean, Doug used the word authentic, I quote-unquote, "normal" you were, and approachable. And it really put me at ease as an incoming Regent to know that, you know, like, it's going to be okay. And that's something that I've heard echoed by other students that have met you. So I want to thank you as a student for your kindness.
Well, as one of the newer Regents here, my experience obviously goes back to the days of the legislature, and Kirk was always a good, strong voice for WSU in the legislature, a respected voice. He took time to come to Olympia. You know, oftentimes I've talked about different types of people who come to the legislature. There's lobbyists and there's real people, and that's not being negative to the lobbyists, but, you know, they get paid to be there. Kirk came, talked to us, we listened to him, he was a real person. And I want to tell you how important that is, because before I was elected, I worked for a state agency, and I had a director who the legislators told, don't bring that person here again. We never had to worry about that, and I think that is great. You know, a leader for WSU athletics, talk about trying to wade through a swamp. You've done a very good job on that, and you kept the Pac-12 together, and you've helped us build, rebuild a conference. I think that's something that we'll look back and say, my God, how did he do that? How did we get there? And you've built a strong statewide WSU, Pullman, Tri-Cities, Vancouver, Spokane, Everett, you know, just think of that versus one campus physically to put all that together and run it, and the med school. You know, we faced constant opposition in the legislature to get that med school up and running, and because you came in and worked on it with you and your team, we managed to get it through, get it going, and has built it into a highly respected institution. And finally, you know, you're open, accessible, a friendly leader, and I've been so honored to have you considered as a friend of mine, and I just want to thank you for all you've done and wish you the best, and we know you're not going away, and we look forward to working with you.
Don't you go ahead, Hallie.
Finish out this row. Kirk, you've increased my already abundant pride in being a Coug. You've made, you've taken and led the institution through choppy waters. You could have said, because this is how you led, remain calm and Cougan. I look forward to walking with you in the next chapter of your life's journey. I thank you for your authenticity.
Well, I'll go. You'd probably just prefer to like build a red wall right here and just hide behind it. This is the most uncomfortable thing for Markie talking.
He has, you know, had a joy of doing that in particular for two years next to me, where I often wondered if they sat us that way just so he could, we, like, sometimes kick me or pull the power cord on my microphone. I remember when I talked to Kirk one day, we just, I had just become the chair, and he was moving, and I was moving, and I was talking about trying to hang a photo, and I'm like, yeah, you know, I just keep nailing nails in the wall until it looks straight. And it gets there, and there's maybe 10 holes, and he's like, oh my gosh, from an engineering perspective, he's like, oh, you're one of those. You're not bringing out the level thing, whatever that is. And I'm like, oh, boy, you're just like my husband. This is going to be a great ride, Kirk. So the other thing that I, you know, chuckled about is I said, hey, listen, we're going to need to get some Fireball or some peanut butter whiskey in the president's suite during football games. And Kirk said, peanut butter whiskey? And I'm like, oh, I'm going to introduce you to something that will change your life. It changed Andrew's life more than anything else. But it is my contribution to the Schultz family, so you're welcome. You know, so much has been said about you, Kirk. What I look to your legacy and You know, so much has been said about you, Kirk. What I look to your legacy and what you have built is, you know, there's two things. One, at times in particular, when I had the opportunity to serve as the chair, there were times that in the face of, you know, some really unfairness, at times betrayal, and other times just inaccuracies of information. In in the face of that, you consistently demonstrated grace. You had a very measured approach where I would be getting on the phone to say, do you want me to go burn that house down? I can burn it down for you, he would say. Because, you know, you find a sense of protectiveness of what when someone leads by true integrity, you want to protect that at all costs. And your measured approach around that and your steadiness was something that I just learned greatly in my journey of leadership as well. And it would carry out through my day where I would go to my next, I'd put my, you know, STCU hat back on and think, okay, what might Kirk do in this scenario? Probably not what my reaction is going to be. So I'm going to kind of channel that. So I just thank you for kind of being that unpaid coach that has helped me along my professional journey as well. Something that I think we all could agree upon with Kirk is that there is a humble humility to him. But there is a deep, deep, highly competitive, very calculating individual that is working and monitoring and observing at all times and is thinking through what's coming next. So do not underestimate him in the steadiness, the humbleness and the measuredness. There is a fire burning there and it is why we get to sit here and and really reap the wonderful rewards of what that is, Kirk. The last thing I'm going to say is what I believe a legacy for sure is when you look at those you've surrounded yourself with and those that have remained as loyal partners to you, when I look at your leadership team and I look at our chancellors and I look at so many of our deans. I think that that speaks volumes of the kind of person you are, that you either attract that kind of smart, talented, dynamic person, or you are such that they want to stay on board with you and they've traveled this time with you. So thank you for creating a legacy of amazing leadership and a team of people that will continue to carry WSU forward into years to come. To me, that is a legacy that just speaks volumes of the human that you are. So thank you, Kirk.
Okay, I'm going to wrap this up and I think that the board members kind of shared a little bit of their experiences. You know, I came in after the Fireball down at the end of the table. And so my leadership style is so much different and I have learned from you this steady vision and this hard work and this optimism that is a confidence where oftentimes, and I think I probably was maybe among your top callers during certain periods of time over the last two years where we were on the phone and I'm sure you were like, I gotta tell her again, it's gonna be okay. And I think Howard here, I think we need a sign that says remain calm and Cougan. You have a way about you that is working, as Marty said, behind the scenes, you're calculating the risks and you're staying true to your optimism and to the vision that you have set forth. And it is that confidence that I have felt so comfortable sitting in the chair next to you and being able to take the step that I'm taking off of the board at the same time that you retire. And I just really want to tell you how much I have appreciated that quiet, calm and confidence because that's what this university has needed. But in no way is that the result of not feeling a sense of urgency or not feeling stressed or not feeling intensity or not getting on an airplane when you're exhausted. So the amount of travel and the hard work that you put into this job, it is not a job. It is a lifestyle and it is a commitment that both you and Noel have made. And I recognize the sacrifices that go into traveling every Sunday and coming home on Saturday for a few hours to swap out a travel bag. And to be able to coordinate seeing your wife before you head to the next event or to come together to another event. We have been truly better as a university because of your leadership and because of Noel's commitment. So as I mentioned, and I think Brett now is calling it Kirk Fest, although I think it is about Kirk and Noel. We will begin what will be, I think, a really fun way to honor your legacy and to begin to tell you all the things that you mean to this organization and to each of us with small dinners on the campuses across the state of Washington. So if you're watching and you're wondering, how can I tell Kirk how much he means to me and how much he has meant to the Coug Nation, there will be opportunities for some of these small gatherings, particularly those that have been a part of your journey. And then we have a board meeting in Spokane in mid-April, which we'll spend some time honoring you there as well. So I just wanted to share with everyone how much we appreciate your willingness to help through this transition, to have the vision 18 months ago that this was how you wanted to move through a transition and bring on our next president. So again, thank you. Maybe another round of applause for her.
Well, thank you all. This morning when I left, you know, Noel said, people are going to say some nice things about you and you need to just accept it. I, as you all know, I don't like talking about myself or hearing about myself, but thank you for all the kind comments and I look forward to celebrating together with you all as a board, with our leadership team, with students, faculty and staff across the system. So I I'm looking generally forward to the next month. But thank you. The other interesting thing is, you know, I, there's so many anecdotal stories, but when Brett and Laura were the only ones here that were at my first full regents meeting, where during the comment period, we had the entire football team and most of the parents came out, we had to move to a different room and had maybe what 90 minutes of comments. And it was over a student conduct issue on one of our starting linemen. And I remember leaving that, you know, thinking, maybe this wasn't such a good idea. So, you know, as I was thinking about what what I wanted to to sort of talk about today. You know, originally, I wanted to be able to send notes out to campus around, you know, some of my recollections and things like that. And we're in such a challenging time with with what's happening at the federal level and the state level and things like that, you know, a whole bunch of reminiscences, reminiscences from the president who's leaving is not what our faculty and staff and students want to hear right now. They're concerned about lots of other things. But today, what I did want to do is take one of those that I was going to write and and really kind of go through it. And so what I did is I sat down over the last month and wrote down every one of the highlights I thought of my time at WSU, what they were. And the idea was to eventually narrow that down to about 10 or 12 things that I thought, you know, if I'm sitting around the old folks home and somebody goes, well, you know, what is it that you remember about your time in WSU? I wanted to, you know, just go through a few things. So I have 12 items that I've kind of narrowed it down that I think are the things that to me, I remember the most about my experiences at WSU. So does this one work? So College Game Day in Pullman. So, you know, I remember distinctly while we were in the Idylle Anderson House, we got up at five something in the morning and they picked us up in a golf cart. And you could see a glow on the horizon that was right outside the football stadium where game day was and you could hear it all the way across campus. And then you, we kind of crested that hill and it was just people everywhere. It was dark. People had signs and Noel and I start our football Saturday mornings always flipping on the TV and looking at game day. And the real Kirk that she always wanted to meet was not me, but Kirk Herb Street. And so this was also just kind of a neat opportunity for us to say hello to this particular group of people. But talk about a celebration of Washington State University. And then we played Oregon that day and we kicked their ass. I mean, so but I remember this distinctly and it's just, it was just a great to kind of be part of this. And for those of you who weren't able to be there, the A D, the president, Noel and a couple of people, we got to kind of walk around the set as they were doing the whole thing. And you really got to see behind the scenes. It all looked so spontaneous and it was really kind of neat to see. So College Game Day. The second on my list of 12 is our our first women's Pac-12 team championship in our history. When we beat UCLA in Las Vegas and you can see the folks standing there. But that was just such a cool thing because you think in our history of women's sports at Washington State University, actually winning a Pac-12 championship in the last year of the old Pac-12, before we rebuilt the new pack, was just really a cool experience to just be part of, to make the NCAA tournament and to watch those young women just come together and gel at that particular time. And again, it was an opportunity, I think, for WSU to be once again on a national stage. So I still got the little pieces of net. I got to go and cut down part of the net. So you climb a ladder with scissors. It's safe. And, you know, you're out there and and so we got the little pieces of net at home in a jar, you know, sitting on our thing that's these Pac-12 championship jars, you know, made in China, you know, with a silk screen thing on there. But it's certainly something that that I'll always remember and I really appreciate, you know, being there. This is the other one, Workday. And I think some somebody mentioned this, but I remember early in my tenure, we had, let's, what do we, vintage legacy? What's the right way to put it? You know, our financial system, I remember our CFO at the time said, you know, we got one person who knows anything about this thing. If it goes down, we will not make payroll. And you're like, oh, that's no risk associated with that at all. If I thought the football thing was bad at a regents meeting, people not getting paid would be definitely, you know, way beyond that. So we started a long process with the board to implement Workday. Now that in itself is just a natural step that you would take. But, you know, Matt and is here, a bunch of the folks that worked on Workday. I love the fact that we did this on time, on budget. The board is not getting hammered in the Seattle Times because of the Workday implementation at WSU. And if I look at kind of where we are now, this is a long process, but we're starting to really see some of the financial tools come out that allow us to make better decisions moving forward. But this is something that it's kind of like replacing the, my biggest project I did at Kansas State was new steam pipes across campus. Let me tell you, everybody's excited by $70 million of steam pipes across campus. It's an infrastructure thing that nobody gets terribly excited about. Workday is the same way. It's going to allow us to be a better institution moving ahead. And I'm just so proud of the fact, the the job our team did on this. And 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 I think we're starting to really utilize that. So 400 million research expenditures, I remember coming to WSU and that was something people talked about, kind of, you know, mythologically. We hope to be at 400 million at some particular point. And and of course, the numbers are not official yet. It's slightly over 400 and there's some lag time there. But this is a testament to our faculty, it's a testament to our deans, our research enterprise. You know, I like to tell people, nobody just hand you research money. You've got to go out and you're competing and you don't compete in different leagues. You don't say, well, Stanford's competing over here and WSU's over here. No, everybody competes. And this is our faculty just going out kicking butt, having better ideas, competing and doing well. And we're seeing bigger and bigger brands that our faculty are not just participating in and lead, but they lead in. And if I look back to my time when I got here in 2016 to now, that's the difference I see is we lead these now. We're not just participants on them. And I think if you look at our size institutionally, the number of faculty we have and the per faculty kind of numbers, it's stunning how great our people are here. And so this is something I'm really proud of and I expect at some particular point under Betsy's leadership, this will be 600 million in a couple of years. But we want to continue to see this grow at at WSU. Well, one of the other things I've had, I was thinking about this last night because I always sleep so well the first night of regents meetings, but is I had the opportunity to do groundbreaking or ribbon cutting on all six of our campuses. And so one of the things that's interesting, universities, we keep buildings for a long, long time. And so you can look and say, well, you know, how important is it to build out some of that infrastructure? It's expensive. It costs money. We got to figure out how to operate, blah, blah, blah. But at the same time, you know, you've got, if you look back at WSU Pullman or some of other campuses 30 years ago, 50 years ago, we still got a lot of facilities that we're going to continue to use. So what's shown here are just two, Collaboration Hall here on this particular campus, the Life Sciences Building in Vancouver. I was there and participated in the ribbon cutting for our one building we have in Everett. The, I was not at the ribbon cutting, but I helped with getting the money for the Medicine Building in Spokane. And then on the Pullman campus, we have Waddell, we've got facilities for VetMed. We just go back, we've just got a lot of different things that we built over that time. This is all a team effort. And I remember coming to WSU, coming from a state where the state did not provide capital money for buildings. We had to either raise it or take it out of our own hide or student fees, basically in Kansas, how we paid for it. And here, finding that the state will do it and we have the opportunity to match that with different philanthropic funds, we've changed fundamentally the way WSU looks at doing buildings across the system. And I'm very proud of that. And it's been cool to to be part of that. So well, so my first interview in 2016 around athletics, somebody said, when are we ever going to get an indoor practice facility and replace the bubble? I remember distinctly that was the first type of things because they've been talking about it. And those who've been around WSU for a long time have been talking about for a long, long time. And when we hired Pat Chun as our athletic director, that this was one of the projects that I talked to him about needing to be able to do. And this was a little bit of a fantasy project, you know, it was like, if you could just find 30 millions sitting around, you know, we could do this. Doing the ribbon cutting on the Taylor Sports Complex, seeing the pictures of our student athletes entering that first time. This thing's huge. You can see it from space practically, you know, but it it just shows if we look at the Taylor Sports Complex, the Champion Center, the Baseball Clubhouse, that our donors will step up and they will make a difference for Cougar Athletics. But this is a really cool facility for campus. And I really appreciate the fact that we were able to get something done. You love it as a leader, right? You get to do things that people tell you they don't think you can do. And I think this was also another one of those. Well, the medical school, several you mentioned this and, you know, I know Marty was very, very involved in the establishment and all the political work that went into just getting the ability for WSU to have a college of medicine. And my opportunity as president was actually getting money to actually, you know, move forward. But if I think if you look back in 30 years, back to WSU during this timeframe, this is going to be seen as, you know, maybe the most important new thing that WSU did, you know, during this timeframe is start a medical school, hire faculty, hire leadership, go through a predination, get a facility, do all of those kinds of things. And all of you on the board I know have met medical students at different times and they are such impressive men and women. Every time I meet one of our medical students, I'm just like so glad that folks had the vision, they did the political homework and background and arm twisting to make this happen. And I just think it's something I hope all of WSU is proud of. Now, the other thing behind this, we always see this, also, you know, the faculty senate moved through curricular issues in record time to try and do it. This was a collective effort across WSU to do this. It wasn't just, do we get the money from the legislature? It's also how our faculty and everybody else stepped up to make It's also how our faculty and everybody else stepped up to make this a reality. I think the next 10 years of our medical schools will be fascinating. You know, how do we make it bigger? How, how, where are those stocks now actually operating and working and things like that? And I think you're gonna, we're gonna look back and go, man, this was really a cool thing to do. The one thing I didn't get done that I really feel, I hope that we can do at some particular point is before all this goes away, we need a really good oral history taken of the founding of the medical school. Who did what, when it came to pass, all those kinds of things. There's people around that still remember all that. But this will fade. And if we're not careful 10 years from now, there'll be a couple of people here or there. And I just think we want to capture this because it's an important part of Washington State University. So the other thing I'm very proud of is we kept our Washington roots here. And Sam mentioned, you know, visiting with the legislature. I, I know there's some members of the legislature that thought as soon as we got the money, we would then start admitting out of state students and kind of doing that differently. A couple of people said, well, we didn't expect you were going to stick with that. Today, we're still doing the same thing. You've got to be a Washington resident to go to the Elson Foy College of Medicine. And I think when you talk to elected officials, that makes a huge difference to them and we've got to keep beating on that. That was part of how we got it funded and we kept. So during my tenure, I've had the pleasure of us having five WSU faculty elected to the national academies. This is Professor Kariki Jenga. He is a part of our Kenya operations. He was an inductee to the National Institute of Medicine. We had two inductees to the National Academy of Science. Just this year, we had another inductee to the National Academy of Engineering. And about two to three years before that, we had another NAE member. I think we only had something like eight or so in our history until recently. But if people don't think that we can retain and recruit exceptional faculty who elect to stay and build their careers at WSU, these national academies, they're, they're so marketable. Any of these folks can just say, I'm ready to leave and anybody will pay them a whole lot of money to come, come there. And it just says a lot about the fact we've got some of these folks that have continued to build at Washington State University, something we all should be proud of. And I think it's really, really important. Also, in the tiering of, of universities, it's not, it's not easy anywhere to get in national academies. But if you're at a university that has 100 national academy members, you, you've got a little bit of assistance, shall we say, in getting people across the finish line. At a Washington State, we don't have that many. We had 10. That's still significant compared to a lot of, that have zero, but it's not the same. And it just means our folks have got to almost be better than almost anybody else to get there. And I just think it's something we all should be proud of. I talked about the research, talking about the work in the classroom. We talked about faculty governance. We, we've got a great faculty here and that's going to be important for us to continue to acknowledge the great work that they do. Quarantine and chill, stay home and keep coos safe. My blood pressure went up when I read this, right? I saw this because it brought back those memories, but higher ed is known for being sort of like the Titanic. You know, we, we just don't move very quickly. Everything moves at glacial speed. I remember it was about over a two week period, our faculty pivoted, our students pivoted. And there was not a lot of noise. I mean, people were like, okay, if this is what we got to do, we got to do. And they roll up their sleeves and got it done. And it just shows that higher ed can change when it needs to very quickly and do it in a collaborative way. I think over the next, you know, five to six years, we're going to be in a very dynamic environment in higher ed, period. And we're going to have to continue to elicit these kinds of changes. But I still look back and it's, it's funny now. I read a lot of stuff about how COVID changed America and things like that. And you know, either great decisions were made or really terrible decisions were made. But I always say leadership, you know, during those times, you do the best you can with the information you have. It's very easy five years later to go, well, I should have done this or that. But I'm so proud of the way the university handled this, moved through it and continues to evolve. So one of the other things that, that I had the opportunity to do is continue to work with our native tribes in the state. I came from a state where our relationship with the tribal nations was not hostile, but it was close to it. And then you come to Washington, you find out a lot of people work together and especially Washington State University does a great job working with our tribes. We had a chance to re-sign our MOUs, 25 years old. We resigned it and had a ceremony. Zoe High Eagle Strong and her team did a great job with this. Interestingly, in the room, there was three people that had signed the original one that were still active with WSU 25 years later. I mean, that, that is commitment to excellence. And, and this was signing for a different tribe. And you know, you always say, well, Kirk, I'm sure you gave them all the WSU gear and all that stuff. These folks show up, a lot are alumni, a lot have family members that came to WSU. They want to see us be really successful and they're committed to rolling up their sleeves and making sure we have opportunities for those native students. So. I think Laura mentioned this to me the other day. I sent you one of my Friday updates about cleaning out my offices. And, and what you wind up doing is you go through all these things that you've accumulated over nine years. And one of the things I came across was this coin and that's, that's Regent Ron Sims. This was Medal of Honor recipient and WSU alum, Ron Scher. And several of you on the board may remember him meeting him. We honored him and his family at a football game. He sent a pass. He had this point at stage four cancer, lung cancer. He was there with his wife and family and, you know, he was just the most unassuming guy. I mean, he kind of stood off in the corner. He, once you started talking to him, he was, he was really a lot of fun to get to know. But you know, to have something and be recognized for bravery and, and heroism by the President of the United States and being alum and just want to come back. And he had two young kids with him. It was just a, one of those, I've met a lot of famous people. This was one of the people that I think I was most impacted by just because of his humbleness. And, and he was so proud of his Washington State University experience. So Ron Scher. By the way, I was disappointed, none of you mentioned in the praise time about my soratorial splendor. Those, those pants, as you can just barely see there, those are some John Daly type of golf pants. And there is no natural fiber in those at all. Poor stuff on there just runs right off. I have a vest. I got, I got the whole, whole thing.
Can you give that to the archives?
Pass them along to Betsy.
The, the last thing is, and I appreciate Sandra's comments earlier, but I've had the opportunity to work with nine fantastic student regents during my tenure. And it's a hard job, right? We have tough decisions to make. Our student regents, they've all come from different campuses and different backgrounds. Some have been graduate students, some have been undergraduates, some served as ASWSU president. You know, they've had all these different things, but every single one of them has brought a unique leadership style to the board. And you know, sometimes had to take some heat from the students because they may see the reasoning for a decision and know that they're going to vote for what they think is best for the institution, even though some colleagues may not like that. But this has been a real pleasure because you get to know people when you're at meals, you're making decisions, when you're rolling up your sleeves. And, and you put them all together like that. It's, it's an amazing thing. And I left one off that was actually on my selection committee. So actually I've worked with 10, but fantastic. So, and with that, just a thank you and my, my final comment is, you know, recently several people said, Kirk, during your tenure, you had a lot of things that came your direction. And, and you know, COVID, pick your favorite set of things. Several of you mentioned that. Recently I've been rereading, reading The Crimson and Grey. And I know when you all did the search for Betsy, that you all looked at that. But it's really interesting as you read those chapters, every president of WSU has had a whole series of things that occurred during their presidency. Whether it's riots around the Vietnam War, whether, you know, you just kind of go back and it's easy to think, well, in this point in time, we've seen more stuff than everybody else. You go back and read this and every president has had those defining moments where most, if they're being honest, they like some parts of how they led. There's other things that they think they could have done better. But when I came, John Gardner, who some of you may remember, he also passed away right after I got here. But he was, he was basically in Mike Connell's position. He said, you know, Kirk was the right leader at the right time. And I believe that if you look at leading The Crimson and Grey, WSU has had this great ability to have the right leader at the right time. And I think Betsy is going to be able to do that same thing, stepping in as our, as our 12th president. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to, to lead and be part of the Washington State University community. So thanks for, this is probably like three times longer than I normally go, but I appreciate the opportunity today to reflect a little bit on, on my nine-year journey as, as your president. Thank you.
I can offer one reflection, since you mentioned my name. I think it's really important. I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam War notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you.
I think it's time for a break. So we just got started.
Peanut butter whiskey. 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 Peanut butter whiskey.
No. 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 I would love it. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you. I think it's time for a break. So we just got started. I would love it. Since you mentioned my name, I think it's really important, I believe it's really important. And you all heard me talk about how complicated these jobs are. And they have only become more complicated over time, Vietnam notwithstanding. You have to have, I firmly believe, you have to bring your moral core to the table in order to do this well and to serve the people that we need to serve. And it is incredibly gratifying to step into a role where the previous occupant clearly brought that to the table and has left it in place for me. In 2024, we started to correct that imbalance, and we saw an increase in our student credit hour production, and we also saw a reduction in the number of sections. Now, you might say, how is that possibly helping if you're decreasing the number of sections? Well, it helps us in many ways. It first provides much more predictability for students and faculty in their course scheduling. There's no last-minute, "course isn't going to make, we need to change your schedule." It optimized and helped equalize our faculty workloads, and it has allowed us to better reallocate funds to better serve student needs. So another way we use this data was to examine the viability of our academic offerings. And when we say "we," I mean "we." Our vice chancellors, Kate McAtier and Damian Sennett, worked very closely with our academic directors, all of our faculty, and the deans that were affected. So it was very much a team effort to examine these programs. Three programs really stood out to us this year as needing a closer look because they were low-demand programs, as you can see in this graph. We took two of those programs and we restructured them by integrating key courses into existing majors, thereby deleting the major itself or not offering the major itself, but also maintaining a pathway for students to get into those fields should they wish by offering cognate areas rather than full-on majors. We also fully discontinued one program, and I think you can tell which one that is because it's the blue line up there, and it was our BFA that graduated exactly one student in the last seven years. That program was eliminated completely. So one of the things I want to make sure you understand is that these changes don't mean we're shrinking our offerings or that we're not hiring faculty on this campus. Campus, like the opposite is true. We are actually expanding, but we are expanding in high-demand areas, and we are expanding thanks in part to the proviso funding that we've got received from the state. So we have currently five faculty hires, that faculty that we will be hiring in the Institute of Northwest Energy Futures, and we will cover at least three disciplines in those hires. We have eight faculty hires for social work. We have three new faculty in cybersecurity, and we will hire one faculty each in engineering and education. So again, by using the data in the way that we have, we've been able to focus on our strengths, as you heard yesterday, and move in a very positive directions to continue to be relevant to students and industry in our area. Okay, enrollment and retention. Enrollment was another bright spot for us. Very happy to report that. As you can see, we saw an overall 3.3% increase in enrollment. Breaking it down, we had, our first-year class was 16% higher, but overall, 3.3% increase in enrollment this last year. And our spring enrollment is up as well by 5.3%, which is pretty remarkable. Spring is usually down. What's our secret? Our secret is that we have a tenacious and local recruitment team, and that is crucial for our success because having our enrollment team on our campus is important to us because the team knows the region, they know the people in the region, they know the people in the schools and the school districts, and they can offer a highly personalized touch that makes all the difference in our recruitment. And you need no further proof of that than last year when we had all the FAFSA delay, and our recruitment team was on the phone constantly with our prospective students, encouraging them to be patient and letting them know what the progress of the FAFSA was so that they didn't drop out because they didn't think they could afford it. Retention is, of course, another important factor in enrollment, and we are paying close attention to that. It was a bright spot for us this year in that our new first-year students returned to an upward trend in retention this year after a slight dip last year. But we have a very aggressive strategy for increasing retention on our campus. This year, we formed the Office of Academic Engagement, and in this office, we offer faculty pedagogical development and support to increase student success in the individual classrooms. And so not only does this office house our Faculty Academy for Data-Informed Teaching, it helps faculty integrate high-impact practices into their classrooms. And high-impact practices, just for a review, are those activities that have been empirically demonstrated to show that they help students persist to graduation. If you were here a few years ago, you might remember a video I showed from a student, Yasmin Lagounas, as an example of a high-impact practice, which was a hands-on reflective learning experience. Yasmin would have been here with us today, but she is leaving today for her second first-gen study abroad trip, and study abroad is another high-impact practice. Today, though, I'd like to highlight another high-impact practice, and you heard about this yesterday as well, undergraduate research. Our work, we've been working diligently over the past few years to increase our undergraduate research presence, and our work in increasing undergraduate research has produced some very, very impressive results. I have with me today a student, Diego Manhel Monroy, who started doing undergraduate research in his second year. He is now interested in a career in research and the pursuit of a graduate degree. Diego credits this desire to the thrill of making a novel contribution to science. It is that thrill of discovery, the joy of learning and contributing that we strive to instill in all of our students here at WSU Tri-Cities. He has since worked on three undergraduate research projects with three different professors and is now a triple major in mechanical engineering, computer science, and mathematics. He plans to submit his papers for publication in scholarly journals, and his research was presented by his professor at a national conference. He has won the Scott and Linda Carson Undergraduate Research Excellence Award, presented in the Showcase for Research and Creative Activities, and is a Batel Chancellor's Summer Scholars Awardee. He is also the recipient of numerous scholarships. Diego is here with us today. Research.
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to share my work. I would like to give everybody here just a very brief overview of the three projects I am currently a part of and have been for a few years. I'd like to begin with the first one on the upper left, radial averaging for Cartesian two-polar mappings. So this is a project that comes about due to a problem that arises in certain computational engineering and computational science studies. Most computational science has to do with processing and generating data using mesh-based algorithms and tools. Here, the figure on the upper left, the purple, is a simulation, a plasma white dwarf merging simulation, and that is done on a Cartesian or rectangular grid. There are two very common types of grids, the Cartesian or rectangular grid and the circular or polar grids. And so this one, it's a little hard to see, but there are vertical and horizontal lines that define the mesh, the rectangular mesh. But due to the circular nature of the phenomenon we're actually studying, we may want to further process this in polar-based tools or some other method. And in order to do that, we need to be able to map the data from the Cartesian grid over to the polar grid. And at the core of that problem is actually a very deceptively complex algorithm you have to design first. So there are existing methods that do this, but they rely on some rather problematic approximations. And so in order to do this exactly, or at least to the level of precision that the machine hardware will allow, you need to solve this specific problem. So what you need in two dimensions is to calculate the area of intersection between any circle and any square, because we want to get the overlap between the two types of regions. Or in three dimensions, the volume of intersection between any sphere and any cube. This seems sort of like a straightforward problem. They're such elementary shapes. But it gets very complex once you start to consider all the different ways a sphere and a cube or a circle and a square could intersect. All the different contours that could be created by that region of intersection gets just out of hand. But we were able actually to write a general algorithm that can do that for the two-dimensional case and the three-dimensional case. And we are now just in the process of using it to write the complete algorithm that does the Cartesian two-polar. So that is work I'm doing with Dr. Lern here on campus, and I've been doing this for almost three years now, just off and on between my classes. And the next project that I would like to talk about is Physics-Informed Deep Learning Fluid Dynamics. This is still in the same vein of computational science and engineering. This specific project explored the use of deep neural networks, which are the backbone of what we know as AI today, and explore their use as a replacement for traditional computational techniques, which are those mesh-based techniques I talked about just a little bit ago. And so what we were trying to do was, or what we did, was train a deep neural network to solve a system of differential equations that described swirling flow. So an example of swirling flow can be seen prominently on this image of this aircraft. It's the region of flow, sort of the cloud that's forming from just behind the nose and flowing over the wing. Understanding and being able to predict the formation and evolution of these flows is critical to safe engineering design. Swirling flows like these can change the aerodynamics of the aircraft very quickly and very dramatically. So it's really important that we be able to predict this. And so traditional techniques are very successful, but deep neural networks have some characteristics that show promise in addressing certain limitations of those traditional techniques. And so we were able to generate some predictions using the deep neural network. This animation here on the lower right is actually a plot of the stream function, which we can think of as sort of showing the general flow, the direction of the flow. And so what we see, the motion we see here, is the formation of a vortex, which is sort of that weird tornado-looking thing at the end of the airplane example. So it's a bubble that forms where the vortex breaks down. So we were able to submit our work to the American Physical Society's annual meeting of the Division of Fluid Dynamics, and we were accepted, and that was presented there in Utah earlier this academic year in November. And then, just continuing on with the machine learning topic, this is the latest project I've been part of, multimodal federated learning for Alzheimer's disease detection. This is a project, oh, and I should mention, the previous project was with Dr. Zheng here on campus. And we hope to continue this work in the upcoming academic year. So exciting, that's an exciting project. But anyways, this last project is actually just a semester-long project with Dr. El Machalawi and his Cybersecurity and Machine Learning Research Group. And so what we're trying to do is develop a distributed system that uses artificial intelligence to detect Alzheimer's using patient MRI images and patient speech input. But our focus, our main focus, is on patient privacy and security. And so the difficulty in our work is employing federated learning, which is a technique that allows one to train an artificial intelligence model maintained by some sort of central entity. So in our case, it might be a central medical institution. So train that model using patient data that's collected on what we call client stations. These may be like a device in the patient's home or a device managed by some sort of local clinic. So train the central model and get all the benefits we get from using a lot of patient data without actually sending any of the patient data to the central entity. So it's a rather complicated scheme, and the difficulty is employing that with multimodalities with both images and patient speech. And so we're right now just in the, still in the beginning stages of setting up our infrastructure, but we hope to finish, have some good results by the end of the semester, and hopefully have enough so that we could submit for our journal publication. So thank you so much for your time, and that's it.
I was just gonna say, that's one of my favorite presentations ever. Let me know if you need courses set up down here. I'll make sure they're video conferenced to you.
Tell me about, I don't know this, tell me about funding for undergraduate research. What's the source of funding?
So I mentioned the Batel Scholars. Batel is the operator of the Pacific Northwest National Laboratory, and they have funded our summer scholars for the last two years, so that has provided us a great deal of funding. We have used other gift funds for doing that, and we're also setting up as part of our comprehensive campaign a scholarship that's called the Impact Scholar. We have someone in the audience, actually, who has donated to that already. And Impact Scholars are scholarships, they're $50,000 over five years, and the student is able to use that funding for their tuition, mostly for their tuition, but they're also able to use $2,000 for a high-impact practice of their choice, most of whom are going to choose or have chosen undergraduate research. So we're able to fund it in that way as well.
Can you tell us a little bit about where you're from?
I'm just about 20 minutes from here, Pasco. Did my whole K through 12 here. I've always liked science and math and all that stuff, so I started here as a mechanical engineering student and soon discovered there was a lot more to learn, and I wanted to learn a lot more, so I got into computer science. And then later on, I realized what I most liked was sort of like the theoretical and mathematical aspect of it, and so that's why I recently just started doing, also working on the math major.
And he's also a musician.
You gotta be careful.
You really do, Brett, you do.
So did you go to Pasco, I?
Chihuahua High.
I taught at Pasco years ago, so musically, what do you play?
Oh, I did the orchestra. I played cello in the orchestra from fifth grade on through high school, and I was also drummer in the jazz bands, same thing, through middle school, high school, and played also tenor drums and snare drum in the drum line.
I was gonna say, what do you do in your spare time? Playing music, I'm sure helps. Incredibly impressive. Thank you for being with us.
And that's the end of my report as well. So any questions for me?
So, Senator, I just applaud your leadership and really the courage around the work you've done on this campus to truly assess and evaluate the cost-benefit of what you're providing. And that takes courage to do because there's places to look at of where do you double down? And where do you sunset? And that's hard work to let go of legacy things perhaps, or things that are really near and dear to people. And it just, I think, is a model in which we will continue to need to do across the institution as we navigate kind of this new era of higher ed, and done a really remarkable job of that. The other thing I was just gonna say is, yes, for sure, our campus is incredibly influential in this area, but there is nobody that, when I speak with my fellow counterparts in the business community here, that does not truly acknowledge your leadership in this area, and your breadth of influence is wide. So thank you very much.
Well, the data helps with those difficult conversations, I will say. Kate McAtier has a mug that says, "Without data, you're just another person with an opinion." And we try to make sure that we... We do try to make sure that much of what we do is data-focused. It helps to kind of bring us all down to, this is what we're being shown. What are we going to do with this to be impactful?
I just wanted to, two things, unless anyone else at the Board has questions or comments for Sandra. Impressive work, and so much to be celebrated here. You and I have spent some time, and I just kind of want to build on Regent Dickinson's comments regarding the program review. That is necessary and needed across the system. I know Provost... I know Provost Riley Tillman's working on that, but you have set a model for what we need to be able to be courageous about across the university, but you've also shared where then we can continue to invest, which is the intent of doing a program review. So I just, I really want to make sure that we're able to see this is where we're headed from a overall university perspective. And the Tri-Cities results can certainly be, many of the results we can experience are across WSU. So I want to applaud you for that. And I agree, being named a woman of influence, a person of influence is a big deal. And while you want to share that in a humble way that President Schultz thinks and acts and models leadership, we do want to congratulate you. And at the back of the room, we have a former student regent who's made his way into, into the room. And I just, you missed a moment where President Schultz reviewed the top 12 highlights of his career, and your name and face was on the slide, Isaac, so. Yeah, we can't let you sneak in. So glad to see you here and continue to be excited to hear how your career is evolving. All right, so we begin the process of our reports from our shared governance groups. And I'd like to go ahead and invite our Associated Students of WSU Tri-Cities President Parjo Parwar.
Sorry. I have no idea who I'm gonna top that last presentation. All right, forgive me if I'm not making like a lot of eye contact, I'm a little nervous right now. But I want to start off with a good morning and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Parjo Par, the president of ASWCTC, the Associate Students of WC Tri-Cities. It is an honor to represent the students of our campus and share the impactful work that ASWCTC has accomplished this year. ASWCTC advocacy and student engagement have been the heart of our work. Our goal is to enhance, sorry, the student experience, provide critical resources, and amplify student voices both within our campus and at the state level. This year, our team has led initiatives that directly address student needs, strengthen student connections, and increase civic engagement on campus. This year, ASWCTC achieved record-breaking participation in COU Day at the Capitol, where students advocated for key bills impacting higher education. We were able to take state 16 students out of 27 students that we interviewed. We were able to take some global students as well. And there was 102 students that we took in total as a WC system. We advocated for expanding the Washington College Grant, strengthening protections for student rights, increasing funding for basic needs support, and renewing the WSU Native Scholarship, ensuring equitable opportunities for all. ASWCTC also hosted an event called Student Voices Legislative Ears, a panel connecting students with elected officials. The elected officials in attendance were Representatives Connors, Bernard, and Flicker, and then Senators Benke and Dozer. Lost my spot. The event encouraged students to ask questions, engage in advocacy, and increase the importance of, and recognize the importance of their voices in policymaking. It included voter registration and pledge to vote drives as well, fostering civic engagement. Additionally, ASWCTC participated in the Campus Voter Project, a statewide initiative involving 14-plus campuses. ASW, I mean, WC Tri-Cities set goals to register 180 students and collect 200 voting pledges. We were able to register 100 students this year and collect 140, 140 voting pledges, which is a little over halfway our goal. Working closely with organizers and other campuses to track progress and, and share resources. ASWCTC is also currently working alongside, alongside the Career Center to once again tailor a networking event for the WC Tri-City students. It brings together local employers, including PNNL, WRPS, CBC Co., and Hennford, just to name a few, allowing students to engage with industry professionals and explore career opportunities. The event, this event, we had a similar event last year, and it received overwhelming support. And we're sticking to our promise that we made last year at this Board of Regents meeting to make it a permanent, permanent annual event. Additionally, efforts were made to expand access to professional development resources, including a business amplifier credit opportunity for students in the college of business. Fostering a strong culture and community on this campus is very important to us. Our team works closely with the Office of Student Engagement and Leadership to organize Cougar Fridays, a weekly event that encourages students to wear WC gear and participate in campus activities. Earlier this year, on August 30th, 2024, Chancellor Sandra Haynes signed a decree officially declaring Fridays as Cougar Fridays on this campus to celebrate the traditions and spirit of WSU. It emphasized the importance of university colors, crimson, and gray to as symbols of unity and pride within the WC community. And we make it a point to focus on student feedback and accessibility from increasing study spaces and working on facility improvements and expanding campus safety and access. Our senators and directors have been committed to ensure that student voices drive decision-making. Finally, as a wrap of my presentation, I want to circle back to the Washington College Grant mentioned earlier. I want to bring to your attention the current situation of our state legislator and budget. Oh, financial aid cuts are being considered, and there are even talks about tuition increases statewide. I would humbly ask the board, as the board, you engage with these discussions and support maintaining the Washington College Grant as its current level and opposing any tuition increases beyond what is currently allowed. You heard firsthand from students earlier this year about impact, the impact of student, the impact of tuition increases on student lives and the need for financial aid. Please take an active role in these conversations and support students. As we look ahead, ASWCTC has set a stage for continued success. We are excited to welcome a new team of student leaders very soon to actively carry forward our commitment to advocacy, engagement, and student success. We proudly, we proudly stand by our motto, "For the students, by the students." The accomplishments of this year reaffirm dedication to serving the student body, leaving a lasting impact on our campus. Thank you.
Nice job.
I do want to thank Parjo for being one of our committee members for the Presidential Selection Advisory Committee. So in her spare time, she shared her talent with us. And what she demonstrated was an extensive network and an ability to really share the voice of all of our students in that process. So thank you for being part of the committee.
I'm really impressed with the number of activities you talk to us about and the way you're building Cougar Pride, and that's just wonderful.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm just blessed to have like an amazing team. Like most of the stuff I said was all thanks to like, like the senators and the directors, I've really got blessed with it.
That shows good leadership, that you have a team that's effectively engaging in a variety of things. Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm a WC Tri-City student. I am a triple major. I majored, another triple major. I am majoring in Business Administration, Psychology, and Biological Sciences. I'm pre-MSTP Medical Scientist Training Program, which is an M.D.-PhD program, government-funded. And in my spare time, I like to travel. I like playing games. I love game nights, you know?
Native Washingtonian or?
I was born in California, but I was raised in Washington. I did all of my K through 12 here. And so did all of my siblings.
Thank you for having me here.
Thank you for being with us. You did a great job.
Good morning, Tracy. I see that you're on with us and you're ready to go. So our faculty senate chair, Tracy Klein.
Thank you very much. Are you hearing me okay? I've got earplugs in, so.
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you. I just wanted to point to the report that you have in your packet as well as the summary slide. I won't linger on too many details, but I certainly am available to answer questions about either of those. I would like to say that I was able to be in Washington DC this week and visited the Hill. I was accompanied in the morning by Jake Dowd, the Director of Federal Relations from Washington State University. This is a wonderful opportunity to meet with Representative Maria Guzenkamp Perez. And again, just from the faculty perspective, be able to talk about how we educate across the state of Washington and the value of our education, particularly to provision of a healthy workforce in the healthcare industry, which is what I am also a part of. We've also instituted weekly meetings between the Senate Faculty Executive Committee and the Provost. And we are very engaged in all of the changes that are going on. We have spent a lot of time making sure that the communication loop between the Senate and administration is transparent and that faculty are able to provide input and get their questions answered. So again, while we've continuously been engaged in an advisory capacity as the faculty senate, we really appreciate some of the additional engagement that we've had, both with the Provost as well as in the university budget hearings process and some of the other budget committees. I do want to point out that we have a joint memo that was signed with the Provost on our website that's just reaffirming the commitment to shared governance as we go through our analysis of our academic, in particular, impact on the budget. I will say, you've heard a lot about the state legislature from some of the student groups, and they're doing a great job getting out there. We are concerned about what we've heard from the governor, specific to furloughs. And there are a lot of questions that faculty have expressed about that. Our understanding is that at this point, the primary impact of potential furloughs in the budget would be on the state agencies. But of course, we're all impacted by that, and we certainly do have risk to our staff as well. In terms of our faculty, the furlough process is very well specified in the faculty manual. So again, it's something that we are keeping an eye on, and we may be doing an individual town hall specific to furloughs and questions about furloughs as that situation develops. Again, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have and looking forward to continued work with administration as well as with the Board of Regents. Thank you.
Questions of Tracy?
I have a question.
Tracy, thank you and thanks for serving. I just was looking at the slide on your Chair-elect candidates and getting to see Professor Horn as well as McEwen. Can you just speak to that? I, I know that Professor Horn has just recently served and done a very nice job of that. I'm anxious or interested to understand the level of engagement of the Senate faculty who are wanting to perhaps lead in those positions. And are you seeing that that is just because Professor Horn has done a very good job? Or are you, is the faculty have some fatigue around wanting to kind of lean into a role like that? And Professor Horn's willing to do it?
Well, I can't speak for Professor Horn, but I would say that she was a very good faculty senate chair. She recently completed a sabbatical, so perhaps she got energy to reengage in the role. I will point out that there are two candidates, and they're both from the Pullman campus. So part of what we have been working on, and you've heard other presentations around this, but just how to move forward the concept of, of one WSU. And this is the first year we've had anyone at chair from a campus that is not a Pullman campus. So next year, we'll have a chair from the Spokane campus, and then we will have a chair, one of the two candidates from the Pullman campus.
I would like to harshly answer that as well. As we've discussed here, when you're in the leadership role for a year, you learn so much. And you're about ready to really start leading when you step off. And so we have had in the past senate chairs come back and run again. And I think this is an excellent opportunity to have someone that has done a lot for us come back and use that knowledge now to hit the ground running on the start of what would be a second year of leadership with a break in between.
Great. We'll expect to see you go through the chairs again. I just want to call attention to, and I'll forward this out to everyone. If you're not watching the Faculty Senate website, where there's the blog and there's information that is pushed out, this was a really phenomenal memo that was sent out both by Tracy and by our provost, really emphasizing shared governance, which I know at this table, we all very much believe in and look to our Faculty Senate on behalf of the faculty to be able to not only report out to the board, but to be engaged at all levels with the university. And so a couple of examples that I'm just gonna say out loud that I think are important is the Provost's office and the Faculty Senate Executive Committee are having, there are representatives on all 40-plus budget hearings. And that was something that we had asked Regent McDonald to serve on last year. And so I'm really excited to see that the Faculty Senate's engaged in that way and also currently assigned to the following initiatives, the Federal Administration, Leadership Teams Faculty Group, and the Workload Policy Task Force. So essential policy and responses that are needed right now are being done with the Provost's office and with Faculty Senate side by side. And that's the way in which we want to continue to move forward. So I deeply appreciate your leadership, Tracy. I know that it's not easy and that it's a lot of work beyond what you do every day. So thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you very much.
And I say this pretty much every board meeting when Tracy says this, but particularly in the last, I would say, four to five weeks. I think Tracy and I talked two, three times a week at this point, one way or the other. It's, it's, it's been really important for us on the administration side to be able to get a constant feedback loop. You know, and sometimes it's getting clarity on what we need to do or how we need to communicate. Sometimes it's, it's clearing up misinformation. There's, there's just a tremendous amount of misinformation going on right now. And for me to be able to call Tracy and sometimes be like, am I hearing this right? Or Tracy called me and say, am I hearing this right? Or me with the executive, or me with all the Faculty Senate, which we're now doing much more repeatedly. It's, it's an incredibly advantageous spot for WSU that we have this type of relationship going into the next whatever amount of time it's going to be. As opposed to what, what is the situation with faculty governance at most universities, which is acrimonious, combative, non-communicative. And I mean, this is, this is one of the clear strategic advantages we have to deal with the situation going forward. So thank you, Tracy.
Well, and I'll just add that that's not been something that hasn't been the result of intention and thought and careful cultivation of those relationships, which, as you heard from Regent McDonald, began with President Schultz. And so as we see a transition, we'll want to continue to make sure the Faculty Senate, in addition to the Provost's office, but the President's office also has a touch point because we know how much value that brings. But thank you for everyone that's working this and working together. All right, we are on to the Administrative Professional Advisory Council. Chair Tony Burks with us. Hi, Tony.
Hi, Lisa. Thank you for having me and good morning to all the rest of the Regents. You know, at the time, at the time we prepare these reports for you guys, it seems like an eternity elapses. And you know, I'll echo what Tracy shared because a lot of the information that has come out from the state in the last couple of weeks is coming across our emails in our desks. out from the state in the last couple of weeks is coming across our emails in our desks, and we're getting a lot of questions and inquiries, and are committed to sharing information as we get it, and being part of the process to help calm anxieties and dissuade fears, and share information, and help people through the process. So, you know, that was, that was all brand new to us since we prepared our reports. You know, for some, for some good news, I really enjoyed personally being invited and being able to attend the reception for President-elect Cantwell, and meeting many of you face-to-face in person, and starting meaningful dialogue and relationships, and look forward to continuing those, as well as the excitement and the energy that Dr. Cantwell brings to, you know, it's chaotic, it's stressful, but there's, there's hope, there's, there's, there's energy, there's excitement. And so we're going to lean into that and work towards that. You know, in our February meeting, we welcomed guests from the WSU Government Relations Office. Chris Mulick came and talked about things that were going on at the state. Obviously, this was before some of the recent developments, but just kind of shared some insight. And Jacob Dowd also came and talked about things at a federal level. And it's, you know, there's a lot of unknowns, and there's a lot of answers, but it really, it was comforting and reassuring to interact with the people who are out there on our behalf, you know, in the trenches and working in these issues, and looking out for our best interest. So that was, I think, a really helpful engagement and discussion that we had at our, at our February meeting. Our March meeting is actually coming up on Tuesday next week, and we've got Dr. Lisa Guerrero, who is the Vice Provost for Equity and Inclusive Excellence, coming to just have a conversation and dialogue to talk to us, because again, it's a, it's a, it's a change, and, you know, buzzwords are changing, and things are shifting, and we want to know, what does that look like? What do we know? I mean, there's a lot of unknowns, but what do we know? And how are we, how are we navigating these waters? So it's super helpful. Our Elections and Bylaws Committee has been doing a lot of work to clean up some old language, to make things easier to digest and read. We're also looking at some of our structures to see if, if, when they were written, you know, does it still apply today? Does it make sense? You know, just anecdotally, what we were just talking about with the Faculty Senate structure, and the how they have a Chair-elect that's coming in, and that's pretty much known for a year while the Chair is doing their thing, and then the Chair stays on, where, you know, would that be a helpful structure for us as well? Or is it too disruptive? And, you know, so we're going to have, I think, some of those dialogues and conversations to consider, do we want to keep the same structure that we have, or do we want to look at other structures mirroring other, other facets of the university? We also connected with our new HRS ex officio member, Sharon Games, and HR wants to be more involved with the information and, you know, conversations that we have. And so we have, having a dedicated member in HRS that just helps strengthen us, and the communications between staff members and HRS, I think, is invaluable. So we're really looking forward to that. And, you know, she's already given us stuff to put into our newsletters and to help keep communication flowing. You know, our, our monthly photo competition has been blowing up. We've got some really talented folks that take some pretty stunning pictures, and we want to be able to publish those. So we're currently looking at a way to watermark them so that, you know, people keep their copyright and they're, they get the credit that they're due for those things. And so we're going to look to how to showcase those across the WSU system. We've got elections coming up later this month. We've got the AP Appreciation Awards that are happening in, well, it's AP Appreciation Week, and then the AP Appreciation Awards coming later in April. So we're excited about some of the things. We're also nervous, as I'm sure many of you are. We, there's a lot of unknowns, but we are, we are looking toward the positive and leaning into the good. So we're, we're keeping on, keeping on.
Thank you, Tony. Are there any questions or comments for Tony? Okay, maybe I'll just make a couple quick statements. First, I think it was great to have you at the reception for President Cantwell. I agree, there was some meaningful connection that was there. And one of the things that's so important, as we even think about shared governance beyond the faculty and the Board and the Provost's Office, we think about shared governance with each of the areas within the university. I benefited from time with you and with Regent Hunt to hear more about your perspective around the legislative asks and salary increases. And, and so just those moments and those times where we're not in this formal setting, but we're having the opportunity to listen to one another is really valuable. So I appreciate you being there for that. The second thing that I wanted to add is, we had a presentation on the review, the Administrative Review and HR, and we had Jennifer Klein that was here with us, and Leslie was reviewing that. One of the things that I heard from you was, and what you just reported on, were the improvements and the integration of HR. So I just wanted to kind of try to connect some more dots here that, based on the review and the changes that are being made in our HR team, we're hearing from those that are experiencing HR's impact, and it's positive, and it's helping us to move forward. So I appreciate you mentioning that, particularly as we look at how HR integrates with our whole WSU system. So thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
All right. Hello, AJ. Good to see you. We'll move over to the Graduate Professional Student Association Report with President AJ Farman.
Good morning, members of the Board of Regents. I am here today to provide an update on the activities and initiative of the Graduate and Professional Student Association. First, I would like to share an update on our 2025-26 general election. The election process for our next leadership is currently underway. This year, we have a successful general election with most of our key leadership positions, including President, Vice President, Vice President of Legislative Affairs, or FEE. The election ballot opened on March 3, and will remain open until this upcoming Sunday. However, we have 72 seats in our GPSS Senate, and filling all of them at once is challenging. So we will be conducting an open election after the general election to fill up the remaining Senate positions. Next, I want to highlight the upcoming GPSS research exposition and academic showcase. This is a joint collaboration with GPSS and the graduate school. The event is scheduled for March 27, and will allow 72 students to present their research to a wider audience. Moving on, GPSS, in partnership with SWSU Pullman, is preparing to host the Student Coronial Council meeting on April 18 and 19. This will be at least, this will be the last HGC of the academic year, making a transition between outgoing and incoming leadership across all the campuses. Additionally, the student region interview will take place on the same day. Last year, we invited the members of Board of Regents to come to our HGC meeting and interact with the students, and this year, we will be doing the same, inviting the Board of Regents members. And if you are available, it will be a great opportunity for the students to meet with the Board of Regents. In our last HGC Steering Committee meeting, student leaders expressed eagerness to invite President-elect Cantwell to the HGC meeting. We know she might be busy during this time, but it will give student leaders across all the campuses to meet with a newly-elected president. So in recent days, we will be sending the invitation to the members of the Board of Regents, as well as the President-elect Council. We also have a number of upcoming events that support student building, community engagement, and professional development. For student building, we are excited about the UFEED 4.0 with the partnership with WC URA, a program that promotes an active and healthy lifestyle on campus. Additionally, we have serving spoons, crafting nutrition meal on a budget event. We know students are functioning as a tight budget, and cooking a healthy meal on a budget is a valuable lifestyle. So we hope this event will help new students. On the community engagement forum, we recently held a restaurant Friday in Tokyo City on February 28, and the next will be on Porchite Pizza on Mark on April 4. We also have a Women's Day movie night event featuring the movie party. For professional development, we hosted a session on formatting your thesis or dissertation on February 19. And we also already hosted a Python working group this semester. Thank you, everyone, for giving me the opportunity to present on behalf of GPSS and provide a brief update of our work.
Thank you, AJ. Quick question. Can you tell me the date again that you were inviting the Board of Regents? I may have missed it. You said...
April 18 and 19.
Okay. And where is that?
Uh, WC Pullman.
Okay. I think we are in Spokane right before that, which is very close to Pullman. So we'll follow up with more details. Appreciate your report. Are there any questions or comments for AJ? All right. Thank you, AJ.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to Vice President for Advancement and CEO McConnell to provide the report for advancement, which encompasses the Foundation and Alumni Association.
Welcome, Katie. Great to see you again.
Thanks for having me.
Please.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Let's just start with the fun stuff. All right. Subtle chair. I realized last time I gave my report, I didn't have my glasses, which explains why I was moving around so much. Thank you, Chair Shauer, and members of the Board of Regents, and WSU President, Dr. Schultz, for having us here today. We have had an absolutely incredibly vibrant and exciting month for WSU, for the Alumni Association. I'm thrilled to share some highlights that showcase the powerful connection that we have with our Cougar community. First, let's celebrate our fantastic WSU in Tempe event. We welcomed over 200 alums, WSU Foundation Board members, and WSU leadership for a truly impactful gathering. This marked our third visit to the area, and the results speak for themselves. We've seen increased volunteer engagement, record attendance, including a surge in recent grads, and enhanced recruiting support. We continue to elevate these events by featuring inspiring young alumni speakers who share their WSU success stories and emphasize the importance of giving back. Next, we are deep in the heart of our scholarship selection process, where we'll award over $250,000 to deserving students nationwide. It's always a joy to connect with these exceptional individuals. And in fact, just yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending a scholarship reception at the Everett Campus, where I met a young woman named Gusta, who received the WSU AA Scholarship for the Everett Campus. She's a mother with a small child, who might not have otherwise been able to complete her education. She is an organic and sustainable agriculture major. I've been practicing that. And she said, if I got it wrong, I would just say she was studying farming. What's really exciting is that today, she's at WSU Extension in Mount Vernon, giving a talk to berry growers, and talking about a pesticide that targets the bugs, not the people or the plants. She's incredibly impressive, and there were many others that I met last night who are also doing great, great work. These moments just remind us of the profound impact that we make on these students and their lives and their futures. Last month, I had the pleasure of welcoming the newest member of the Global Campus Society of Distinguished Alumni in Pullman. So when I say SODA later, Society of Distinguished Alumni is what that stands for. And as a Global Campus grad myself, and a member of the inaugural class of SODA, opportunities like this give us the opportunity to engage or re-engage these alumni who might become some of our most effective advocates and future donors. Inviting them to Pullman for Game Day or a visit to the Alumni Center helps them see that they are part of something much, much bigger. The Network of Cougar Alumni, whose strength is consistently ranked by Princeton Review in the top 20 alumni networks, and in case you're wondering, we are number eight this year. Our Alumni Awards Program continues to shine a light on the extraordinary achievements of our graduates. Last month, we celebrated numerous Cougar Pride recognition awards and presented our prestigious Alumni Achievement Award. We were honored to recognize Dr. Simon Lamb, a distinguished member of the National Academy of Engineering. And more recently, at the National Trio Day Events, Mariah presented the award to Dr. Rosie Ramondo, Chair and SAP, Chancellor of Seattle College, and a valued WSU partner. March, as you know, is Women's History Month, and we are collaborating with a wide array of partners across the WSU system and beyond to celebrate and amplify key initiatives. We are particularly excited for our fifth annual Women's Leadership Summit, which is next Friday, March 14, online, so everybody can attend. We have a stellar, stellar lineup of speakers, all women who have built their careers and become exceptional leaders, carving a path in traditionally male-dominated fields. I would be remiss if I failed to acknowledge Dr. Noel Schultz and thank her for her leadership in developing this meaningful program that is very, very popular. We are also proud to support Women's Center, the Women's Center's 50th Anniversary Celebrations, many of which will be held at the WSU Alumni Center. Our collaborative efforts extend to internal partners like the Association of Faculty Women, Society for Women Engineers, Administrative Professionals Advisory Council, Women's Center, and the President's Commission on the Status of Women, as well as, as well as external and industry partners, such as the University of Idaho, Walmart, Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories, Microsoft, and Starbucks. I am also thrilled to announce that our Cougs Connect Community Building is taking off. We are nearing our 1,000-user milestone. Thank you for all of your advocacy there. We really, really appreciate it. We are constantly expanding these partnerships to the WSU Departments and Cougar-connected businesses, including Cougs First, and have recently added video content mentoring month recognition and engage students at the Spring WSU Career Fair. And if you're a sports enthusiast, mark your calendars for Coog Night at the Mariners and get your tickets early. This event always sells out, and people go like this at the end if they missed it. So, so sign up for that. That is in July, and then we'll have Coog Night at the Rainiers in August. The Mariners event will once again feature a recent grad VIP event, building on last year's overwhelming success. Lastly, I am delighted to share another installment of our volunteer video series showcasing the incredible impact of our over 300 dedicated alumni volunteers. Do we have the video?
Hi, my name is Sharon Solomon, and I'm a Coug.
Hi, I'm Martin Boston, and I'm a Coug.
Hi, my name is Leoma James-Sar, and I'm a Coug. The African-American Student Center on the fourth floor of the CUB was instrumental to me. Every single person who worked inside that center was amazing, and I'll even extend it out to the Multicultural Student Services as a whole. The fourth floor of the CUB, everyone in there, that whole entire floor, everyone in there poured into me. They supported me. They loved me. They spoke life into me. They encouraged me. They wrote letters of recommendation. They did everything that they absolutely could to support me in my next journey. And so I would say, that community of the Multicultural Student Services was absolutely instrumental in everything that I'm doing now in my life, and everything I was able to do right after graduation. And I would also say, too, just as a whole, there's lots of services on campuses, lots of people here on campus that you can talk to. And so I would say, fourth floor of the CUB was my home and my safety. And I think for any student here, they can find that home and safety within other communities here at Wazoo.
I've been heavily involved with this weekend, with the Black Alumni Weekend. In many ways, I kind of founded it, right? So this is the third one we've done, and so I've been a part of every single planning for all of those events. I've also been welcomed back as the multicultural alum speaker for the multicultural graduation. So I've come back for that. So yeah, in any way, I can come back to WSU for whatever reason. So yeah, in any way, I can come back to WSU for whatever reason. I try to come back because um, yeah, it's had a huge imprint in my life, so.
I was a part of Vibes, uh, which is bringing high school students from the West Side to WSU, just to tour the campus and get um, encouraged to go into higher education. Um, after I graduated from WSU, I did come back a few years to become a chaperone for those high school students. And I am currently the president of the Black Alumni Chapter with the WSU Alumni Association.
Go Cougs!
Go Cougs!
Go Cougs!
That's awesome.
I want to thank Sharon, Martin, and Leoma for sharing their stories. Their enthusiasm is incredible and I really appreciate them. These videos really highlight the stories of impact, change, and purpose that define the WSU experience. And we're excited to expand the series in twenty-five and twenty-six by inviting alumni to nominate their fellow Cougs. Uh, before I I I take questions, I would like to also make a contribution to Schultz Fest.
Tell me.
Uh, just on behalf of our chapter leaders and volunteers and all WSU alumni, thank you for your engagement with the Alumni Association, for your leadership that has elevated the impact that WSU has had on the state of Washington and on the world. You have shepherded us, shepherded us to the next chapter and we are eternally grateful. Thank you. Um, so thank you to all of you for your unwavering support. We are truly fortunate to be part of such a vibrant and engaged community. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
I thought you were adding an event to.
What are you doing now?
I thought it was tiles.
Hopefully. Oh, yeah. Who, so I know you bought a tile.
Oh, we had, we had lots of tiles.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. We really appreciate that very much.
It is nice to host things at um, the center. So I think we also maybe descended on um, an alum who uh, ended up signing up for a platinum membership um, during President Cantwell's um, reception. So we do appreciate when you come here and when you um, give us some homework. So uh, let us know if there's anything else that you need.
I I will make some notes for next month.
Definitely. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Katie, uh, as always, for your leadership of the Alumni Association. Uh, thank you to each of our members of Board of Regents for your continued service on behalf of Washington State University. I especially want to thank Regents Powell and Reed, as our representative and designated to the Division Foundation Region Remus for her service on the Investment Committee. But I'm grateful to each of you for the time you share with Washington State University. It it really rang true when, yeah, I I had the pleasure of sitting through a seven-hour, eight-hour Zoom Regents meeting a few weeks ago. And it just rings home again what we, how much we ask of you and how much you are willing to share. And so let me again start by saying thank you. I unfortunately was not able to attend uh, the introduction for incoming President Cantwell. And now I start my remarks today and she's out of the room. So I did have a chance to meet her in person yesterday and I was grateful for that and look forward to working with her. Normally I'd start with the numbers. Your primary scorecard has to do with how much money has been contributed year-to-date to Washington State University. As of this morning, that is seventy-three point four million dollars in gifts, pledges, grants, and revocable commitments in a testamentary manner. Uh, we are running behind where I'd like to be. My team knows that. Uh, my supervisor knows that. Uh, everybody's working their tails off and we hope to be able to hit our goal of one hundred fifty-five million by the end of the fiscal year. There are some really nice things in the works, but again, until we've got signed paperwork, it doesn't make sense to talk about things that are in progress or in process. So I will continue to keep you posted. Um, I did push out the quarterly endowment report before the meeting, so you should have that. That was dated December. That was information dated December thirty-first. Uh, at that point, our endowment, uh, the consolidated endowment was seven hundred fifty-four million. Yesterday, I received a report for uh, January thirty-first, we're up to seven hundred and seventy point one million. And then um, since our last meeting, we also received the national database of endowment performance that's distributed by the, it's called the COBO, the National Association of College and University Business Officers. The COBO data gives you a chance to look to see how your endowment performed. In 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 our case, that's how the Investment Committee did their work relative to other colleges and universities. Uh, this is not something we've often reported upon, but I I took a few minutes and I'll confess, uh, this is not, I mean, while their numbers are legit, my effort is not audited. It's me playing on my laptop at night. Uh, but relative to a peer group set of what I would say the land grant universe, uh, it looks like five land grants uh, didn't report. But of the forty-five that did, our one-year performance uh, would have been twenty-first of forty-five reporting institutions. They have three, five, ten, twenty-year data. Uh, for those of you that uh, are familiar with the the management of institutional funds, it is a complex world. And so uh, our three, five, and ten-year numbers range from fourth of forty-five to twenty-fifth of forty-five. My point is that our Investment Committee is doing a fantastic job and I'm very grateful for that. The twenty-year numbers and twenty-year numbers matter in the endowment space because people endow funds thinking they will be there forever. And so the twenty-year numbers were fifteenth out of the forty-four schools I saw. So I just, I want to tip our cap to the Investment Committee and their work. And I also want to be thankful for those who choose to endow funds at WSU. Uh, we don't, again, share this information as widely and often as we should in terms of that, how well they're doing that work. So I just wanted to spend a minute in that space. Earlier, at a prior meeting, Regent Vogel had inquired about ESG. She had to leave. Take a midterm? Come on. Uh, so she stepped out, but I did give her a quick update. Uh, and I promised I, I promised I'd share that with all of you and uh, uh, Dr. Engel also commented, we did in the Investment Committee meeting, uh, we had our Mercer folks in the room with us and are working to to figure out the best way for those who are interested to invest in that ESG-friendly manner within the endowment. Kirk has provided pretty specific direction. The Investment Team is working on that. The Investment Committee will will continue to work on that. And I will continue to provide you updates on that, which I again, did share with with Regent Vogel. Maybe um, Katie referenced uh, WSU in Tempe. I just want to reiterate, you know, this WSU Tempe is one of many of these gatherings we've done. And fundamentally, uh, it was Kirk saying, hold on a second. You know, some people from WSU are going to be here, some people from Alumni Association, what about enrollment management? What about when the teams are in town? Let's create some synergy. So if you think of Seattle Week, that's a much more expanded version of that. But I I just want to thank him for kind of planting the seed and giving us a little nudge to collaborate and work together. It's fascinating when you're far from home in a place like Tempe to see, to Katie's point, two hundred fifty, three hundred people all there in support of WSU. Uh, I know Saichi's not here today, but uh, he would tell you that some of the results that we're seeing in terms of applications are tied to Seattle Week. Kirk has commented on the past. We will continue to leverage the collaborative opportunities. You know, if you're, if you've, if one of us has rented space for five hours, why not let everybody benefit from this? So I'm really grateful and pleased of how that has all played out. Uh, just looking forward briefly, one of the things that Kirk and I, and oftentimes Noel is able to join us, uh, do this time of year, each year, is to have a virtual recognition reception. Uh, we will be doing that. That's for our benefactors. Uh, that's a cumulative lifetime giving of a hundred thousand or more. So new benefactors, we recognize Kirk and I, uh, it's champagne. Well, for Kirk, I drink beer. But uh, virtually, we send them flutes, we send them champagne. It's just a chance to say thank you to some of our most generous donors and it's a wonderful opportunity for them to engage with leadership. And then April eleventh, important, uh, Regent, I'm sorry, President Cantwell uh, will join me for in-person recognition for uh, those donors that have achieved five hundred thousand uh, in cumulative lifetime giving or a million and beyond. So uh, some important recognition activities coming up this spring as well. I have spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out my contributions to Kirk Fest. Uh, I will try to keep this as brief as I can. Uh, first of all, on behalf of John Minjai and the WSU Foundation Board of Directors, thank you. Your engagement, your leadership in the philanthropic space is measurable, but to me, it's much more than the quantitative piece. So I'm grateful. For many of your Regents, uh, spoke today about the attributes that they're grateful for, and I would supplement that by saying, I'm incredibly grateful for your ability to see the big picture and your ability to always think long-term. The thing that I probably appreciate the most professionally is that you have only lived in one place and that's on the high road. Every day, in every way, you've taken the high road. And that, to me, is one of the most important parts of your leadership and I'm so grateful for that. I mentioned yesterday to some of you that uh, I'm in my thirty-seventh year at WSU. By far, the most rewarding part of those thirty-seven years has been working for you. So thank you. I look forward, now there's a day in the not-too-distant future where I, in my mind, I see uh, Kirk and I outside. I'll again have a beer. He'll have a glass of very good red wine. And and I'm not very handy or mechanical. I'm certainly not an engineer. But Kirk, in my vision, is sitting in a chair that's somehow weather vane-esque. And so the chair rotates so that he only faces downwind because he's said so much headwind while he's been here. So downwind, outside, you can pick your wine. I will bring my beer and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Kirk. I welcome any questions.
Questions for me? Um, Mike, can you, with the seventy-three million raised to date, that's new money, correct? And what is the time period again that from what to what are we looking at there?
Thank you, Regent Dickinson. Uh, all of our work is measured on the fiscal year, so July one to June thirty. Our goal for this year is a hundred fifty-five million. Clearly, we're behind, as I mentioned. I think uh, somebody commented earlier today, we've had three straight years over a hundred fifty million. So the team knows uh, we've got some uphill work to do, but uh, I promise you, they're going to do everything they can. And I'm incredibly grateful uh, for the, those who have contributed to WSU already this fiscal year. Uh, those who contributed to WSU over longer periods of time. And then those who are engaged in conversations right now that we may get across the finish line, but you're there. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions?
One of the things that I had hoped, when I stepped into this role almost two years ago, was that we would have all of our board contribute to the foundation. And so I just continue to encourage not only participation and contribution to the Alumni Association, but also to our foundation. So um, that old adage, time, talent, and treasure. And so the treasure piece, we want to make sure that we're continuing to show up and to demonstrate our support. So thank you for everything that you're both.
I appreciate the advocacy for philanthropy and for the Regents. I'm grateful for what you're doing and certainly welcome any conversation, any of you would like to have at any time. But continue philanthropically. Thank you, Regent.
Okay, um, this is a time where we head into um, action and committee reports. Um, I am approximately forty-five minutes past uh, when I was set to be on this uh, consent agenda. However, I have confidence in this group that will be able to move through our uh, committee reports and action items quickly. So um, with that, I'd like to go ahead and begin with our consent agenda. So you have uh, in your packets, approval of three meeting minutes from the following meetings, January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, February sixth, February seventeen. Um, these were included in your meeting packet for your review and I would ask if any Regent would like to remove this item from consent agenda. Okay, hearing none, I will move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now we're going to move into committee reports. I do want to remind those that are watching, which I'm always intrigued at how many folks are watching our Board of Regents meetings. We had an extensive day yesterday where we went through in detail all of these committee reports, we had some conversation. What you're going to see us do is summarize those committee reports and begin to take action. So this is the part of the meeting that does feel a little bit quick and that's intentional because of the day that we spent yesterday going through each of these items. If you're interested in watching any of those committee reports, they're all available on YouTube. I'll begin with the Executive and Governance Committee. Um, we had two topics that we discussed. One was the election of officers and I was pleased with the conversation, particularly as it related to the officers that have expressed interest in continuing down that path of being um, elected in April. Um, but also the dynamic of whether the university may need uh, folks to serve in the role of Chair for more than one year. So it was a good conversation. There wasn't any resolution. We will take action on um, our Chair and our Vice Chair election in April. The second item is the Presidential Delegation of Authority, which I am asking for action. Um, this action is to move forward with the Board of Regents Resolution twenty-five zero-three zero-seven dash seven-two-six, which delegates authority to Dr. Elizabeth Betsy Cantwell or her designees effective April first, twenty-twenty-five. Confirming and continuing all prior delegations of authority to the President or designees to act in matters related to the general business and financial affairs, academic affairs, organization and management of Washington State University, and rescinds prior delegation of presidential authority specifically conferred upon President Kirk H. Schultz. And that in addition to such other specific authority, as has been or may be delegated to the President of Washington State University, the Board of Regents hereby delegates to the President all expressed or implied authority to carry out the administration and operations of Washington State University. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All, is there any discussion? Um, I do want to note that uh, the Board did have access to review the full list of delegated authority and was able to do so. We are not changing authority between President Schultz or President Cantwell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. I will pass um, over to uh, Regent Pika to give a report on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Chair Shower. We met yesterday in this room. It was a really, I thought it was a great meeting. We had a lot of, some great reports, which I'll briefly touch on, and a lot of engagement. There were three information items we discussed. Um, I have one more to add this morning. And um, we have one action item to take um, when I'm at the end of our report. So we kicked off um, with an update from our Office of Research. Vice President Research Kim Christian, who oversees research, you know, also resides on the Pullman Campus. Vice President Christian covered a lot of ground in her update, including the research metrics, results since two thousand eighteen to date, and how we're doing in this year, twenty-twenty-five. Um, we showed very impressive growth. She too outlined what she felt were the strengths in research, trends in federal funding, and the opportunities to build research activities, which included areas in nuclear science, artificial intelligence, and advanced materials. Um, side note, she's a member, executive member of the uh, Pacific Northwest Laboratory and was, it was noteworthy, she was at a meeting the day before our meeting and uh, how her priorities and research office aligned with um, PN and L. Just great to hear. Um, finally, um, I would just like to add that she, um, Vice President Christian began her presentation by presenting to us what were the three key indicators of whether it's both long-term and short-term success at WSU. There are a whole heap of strengths which she outlined were sustained and significant funding, critical mass of talented faculty, and the beneficial society impacts through her KPIs. Our second information item was a mission moment from Dean Debbie Komho from Carson College of Business. Dean Komho began the presentation quite appropriately with their mission statement, which states, "We create insight and opportunities through the study of business, power of our community, of Washington State, and the world." She explained the why that's important, the how they go about their work, and the what, which focuses on their five strategic goals, which include um, face-to-face undergraduate programs, online programs, uh, business education across the university, research that addresses understanding, and finally, insights that influence practice. Dean Komho highlighted the areas, which, three areas, which included the Center for Entrepreneurship, which at WSU is ranked as one of the best programs in country, which is wonderful here. Um, also, second, our MBA program, which too has been ranked. Just a side note there, our son-in-law graduated from that online program this past year and he swears by it. Preaches about it and thought it was the best thing ever. Preaches about it and thought it was the best thing ever, so it's a, his own personal testimony. And finally, the next Carson Coog program, which its core focus is on active learning. The last information item presented yesterday was a delegated authority item on the renaming of the College of Education. From that College of Education to the College of Education, Sports, and Human Sciences. Provost Riley Tillman and our new and dynamic Dean of College Karen Thomas Brown presented the reason for the change. We also got a chance to see and hear from Dean Thomas Brown for the first time. And I think we all have a feeling we're in good hands in leadership in that college. I would add one more information item that I-
Make a comment?
Yes.
Because, and part of this is because, you all know, I'm, my term ends September 30. So, I'll be sprinkling a few comments because I won't be here next year. But on that one, I made a few ask a number of questions yesterday. But one thing that continues to trouble me as I reflect it is the, you know, uses of sports in that title, because there are sports, at least one, I think, that I'm aware of, related program in the College of Medicine. And so, you know, it just makes me, I don't know how the communication's going to work. And, you know, this is the organization, but I just, I guess, suggest that, you know, it's sort of be watched and make sure that we're, we're working together and not in silos.
So noted.
Just because, you know, when you put sports in the name of a particular one, it makes people think it's all, all the sports are there. And then, you have something over in the College of Medicine, et cetera. So, it's just a alignment concern that I have.
Thank you. The one additional information item I would add, which is clearly a serious issue, is that we're going to celebrate our relationship with the College Success Foundation by inviting students from 253 Cougars, current students, who receive either partial scholarships, or most scholarship support, and counseling support at WSU. So, they wear two hats. They're WSU Cougars, they're City, it's College Success Foundation. And we're going to bring them together. We're going to invite them to attend a lunch on April 16. I invited the regions to come. We are going to follow. We're going to up to Spokane for a regent meeting. But I want to add that as of this morning, Marty takes in her leadership role. ST, the Spokane Teachers Credit Union is going to be our sponsor. Thank you, Marty, for that, because it's what you do, and thank you. So, we'll see how this goes.
Point of clarification, your invitation is the lunches on campus that day, and then, the regents' meeting begins, the regents' gathering begins that evening.
That's right. Yeah, so we'll be in Pullman, then we go to Spokane.
Thank you.
And we have one action item. And so, I'm going to move, and then, we can find that out and see if there's any discussion on that. And that would be, I move the Board of Regents to establish a Master's of Science in interdisciplinary study, studies degree for the WSU Pullman Campus.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any comment, Chris, or almost Riley Tillman?
No, I just think this is a, is a fantastic example of different groups working together effectively, creating a better student experience, and I appreciate Judy's being a part of it, and then, a part of the process to come.
Great.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
It's our report.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Strategic and Operational Excellence Committee Report, Regent Dickinson.
So, I, we, we really had kind of a short report yesterday, so I don't really have much to share outside of that we continue to work on our overall strategic bridge plan for the overall institution. We'll keep working with the Board on ensuring there's alignment with where President Cantwell wants to focus and some of her strategic areas that she would like to call out. We want to create a strong trickle effect, or cascading effect, if you will, of what the Board of Regents' expectations are, how that then impacts and is aligned with goals and objectives for President Cantwell, and then, how that cascades out to the entire institution, which does include all of our campuses and our various colleges. So, it's a, I think we're in a very good place at the moment. And we are being intentional about just appropriately, from a timing and sequencing standpoint, not get too far ahead of things. So, Chris White continues to lead that effort with myself, and we will stay connected to the Board on that. That's my report.
Thank you. I appreciated hearing Chancellor Haynes also talk about taking a pause.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's a great acknowledgement. Thank you.
Versus moving campus or college strategic plans forward when you really have to start with the system strategic plan. So, the efforts that you and Chris have done, Marty, to stitch and all of them together, that's a really important component that I appreciated hearing today, so. Okay, we're going to move over to the Finance and Administrative Administration Committee Report with Regent Ramos.
Okay, thanks for sharing your time, Regent Dickinson, because I'm going to need it. Fifteen action items. I do want to first acknowledge and express just deep gratitude to our Executive Vice President for Finance and Administration, and our Chief Financial Officer, Leslie Brunelli, who's really leading the effort across the entire system to integrate the information that I'm going to present here today. Yesterday, we had four information items, the first of which was a rather extensive discussion of fiscal year '26 budget development, but frankly, all of the emerging dynamics at federal, at state level. I heard a new term yesterday. We are in the middle of the vice. And that is meaning that we're being, you know, asked to respond to executive orders, to federal orders, to this Washington State budget deficit. And our Vice President for External Affairs and Government Relations, Glenda Becker Fenter, as well as our Vice President for Research, Kim Christian, were, you know, very demonstrated the amount of integrated communication and coordination that has to happen in order to share the information in a timely way, not only to work issues real time, but also proactively, proactive communication with all of our stakeholders, our internal teams. This is, this is a people-business education, land-grant mission. And when resources are affected, it affects people. And I think our teams really take that to heart as we scan our radars for opportunities, risks, and issues across the entire business. We followed that with a report from the Budget Ad-Hoc Committee that's led by Regent Serna. And we spent, we, as a regent body, spent about eight hours on February 17, Monday, a holiday, an extensive day, deep diving our financial health for the institution, the system, asking, you know, all of our questions regarding impacts and what we can do collectively and again, proactively to help with the system financial affairs. And so, thanks to Regent Serna on that work. We are still on the roadmap going forward to have all of our information to put together a budget for fiscal year '26. We'll have a special meeting later in May to approve that, hopefully, assuming all the stars line up with our government agencies at giving us the information. But hang on, because in April, we've already given you a heads-up that will probably consume another six or so hours of your time going into every element of the financial agenda of the institution. Following that, we had Regent Pika helping us with the Financial Advisory Ad-Hoc Committee for Health and Sciences. And we continue to make progress on being proactive with helping our medical school and our School of Science, Health Sciences. And last, our last information item, our CFO has been helping us to understand all of the services that come out of her organization to support the system. And we had Vice President of Human Resources, Jennifer Klein, giving us an update on her assessment of the organization and how we're making improvements to support every facet of Washington State University. Okay, so those are the four information items. I would like to just take a moment, though, to highlight. I'm going to go through a series of action items, all 15 of them. But it, you know, literally takes the entire system and many hours of coordination. And in particular, for this report, we had many advisory boards helping us give input and insight into the decisions that are being made to increase fees across many of our support organizations. And so, we first had Mackenzie Hammons, our Chair of Student Health Advisory Council, who partnered with Cindy Henby, our Executive Director of Cougar Health Services, give us an outline of their recommendation, their outreach, the process for inclusion, and, and input that led up to their recommendation, which we will vote on here shortly. For the Cup Advisory Board, we had Crystal, Crystal de Los Santos, who, along with Carrie Shaw, the Director of the Compton Union Building, share their fee recommendation. We had Jaylee Urban, the Chair of the Finance Committee for the Residents Hall Association. Now, mind you, all of these students are full-time studying and pursuing their degrees at various levels of their journey and doing this work. So, along with Meg Autry, the Director of Housing and Residential Life, gave us a recommendation on the fees for housing and dining. We had Grant Rickard, the Chair of the University Recreation Student Advisory Board, who informed us that he just got accepted into medical school. And in his spare time, he helped us with the Student Recreation Center on Chinook fees recommendation. And then, finally, we had Tanya Enrique, who, with the ASWSU Pullman President and Chair, along with Dan Welter, the Director in the Center for Fraternity and Sorority Life, and advisor for the student and association organization, come represent all of the students who gave the recommendations for the fees that I'm going to go through here shortly. But one last shout-out, I'd like to recognize and also express gratitude to our WSU Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs, Romando Nash, for leading the effort of the coordination and really digging in to all of our student support services, making an assessment of areas for improvement, and giving us clarity on a path forward. So, thank you, Romando. Okay, with that, that was my five-minute version of a three-and-a-half-hour meeting. And so, now, we're going to go through the 15 action items. Coming before the Board today, following yesterday's discussion, the first action is to vote on the proposed tuition rates for the LNS Floyd College of Medicine for Academic Year 2025-2026. I move that the Board of Regents set tuition rates for LNS Floyd College of Medicine for Academic Year 2025-2026 as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on the proposed tuition rates for the College of Pharmacy and Pharmaceutical Sciences for Academic Year 2025 to 2026. I move that the Board of Regents approve tuition rates for the College of Pharmacy and Pharmaceutical Sciences as proposed.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on the WSU Pullman Housing and Dining Rates for Academic Year 2025 to 2026. I move that the Board of Regents approve the proposed housing and dining rates for the academic year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on the Services and Activities Fee Rate Change for Academic Year 2025-2026. I move that the Board of Regents authorize the rate changes in campus services and activities fees for the academic year 2025-2026 as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Okay, this, this comes under the same category as "I won't be here next year." This has been, one of the things that I have focused on throughout the years and commented on many times is the level of escalating fees. Every year, we hear heartfelt comments and concerns by our students because the fees come up. Again, I mean, actually, there was one year where everybody reduced their fees, and I was a very happy person. And yes, while there's some, there's validity, and the students have worked very hard on this, and as Jen appropriately pointed out, I sometimes wonder if they really understand the full impact on the total cost of education. I mean, this is less of a problem at campuses outside of Pullman because they don't have all the major rec centers and, and that type of thing. But it's, it's just become, all of these fees have become a greater and greater percentage of the total cost of going to school. And so, I just urge those of you who will be on the Board next year when this comes up to really take a close look. And I, I, I am kind of concerned because the students all work on one piece, and you'll see all these pieces. Are, is, are they really understanding the whole? Because when you, if you increase all of these fees, it starts adding up to some real money. So, that's, that's my, sort of, in that part of my farewell. I'm not, I'm not leaving yet, but that's, that's this part of my farewell.
I will channel you a year from now. What I'd like to see next year is, is the aggregate impact. And if it, it may have been presented yesterday, it was, I missed it. But I'd like to know what the aggregated impact is to student fees and tuitions year-over-year.
Well, I think we also discussed that not only looking at the impact, but breaking down each of the costs, where, where your dollar goes at WSU, for housing, for student activities, et cetera. So, you can look and say, here's my bill, here's, here's the receipt. I don't mind, yeah, yes.
I think too, I, I believe and understand that the in-depth conversation and analysis, or I'm assuming, is occurring with those discussions. I would love to see a summary or a highlight of why the increase needs to occur. Is it because cost of rent went up? Or is it because cost of some kind of service they're trying to provide, like healthcare, which, you know, I get? Certainly don't need the full breakdown, but what are some of those highlights around? What is driving the need for the fee increase? I think we all assume and understand it, but the, the rigor in which they are evaluating that, giving us a summary would be helpful.
Regent Pika, did you have anything else to do? Regent Serna, this will potentially be your committee next year, so. A year.
We will definitely look at that and try to make sure we break down. I do think that they, from some of the presentations that, from the students, I thought, well done. And, and that there was enough, try to break some of that down. But I, obviously, I think we want to dig into this more, so we will. But obviously, I think we want to dig into this more, so we will.
And I appreciate the view of the aggregated impact and the whole. So point noted, and for continuous improvement, certainly.
This is a good discussion. I'd like to move forward with all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, you can come on.
Thanks, so.
Okay, the next action item is to vote on Services and Activities Fees Committee allocations for summer of 2025 and Academic Year 2025-2026. I move that the Board of Regents approve the allocation of services and activities fees for summer 2025 and Academic Year 2025-2026 as recommended by the student-led SNAV committees representing each of the WSU campuses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yep, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on the proposed WSU Pullman Chinook Student Center mandatory student fee rate change, not the year. But the Chinook Center. I move that the Board of Regents authorize a rate change for the Chinook Student Center mandatory student fee effective academic year 2025-2026 as proposed.
I guess it's up to me to second that one.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's expensive, but.
Motion pass, yeah, motion pass.
The next action item is to vote on the proposed WSU Pullman Student Recreation Center mandatory student fee rate change. I move that the Board of Regents authorize the increase in the WSU Pullman Student Recreation Center mandatory student fee effective academic year 2025-26 as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on the proposed WSU Pullman Compton Union Building mandatory student fee rate change. I move that the Board of Regents authorize an increase to the Compton Union Building mandatory student fee effective academic year 2025-2026 as proposed.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on the proposed WSU Pullman Health Fee Rate Change. I move that the Board of Regents authorize an increase to the WSU Pullman Health Fee effective academic year 2025-2026 as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on the proposed WSU Spokane Health Fee Rate Change. I move that the Board of Regents authorize an increase to the WSU Spokane Health Fee effective academic year 2025-2026 as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on the WSU Pullman Undergraduate Technology Fee Committee allocations for fiscal year 2026. I move that the Board of Regents approve the allocations as recommended by the WSU Pullman Undergraduate Students Technology Fee Committee for fiscal year 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on the WSU Vancouver Technology Fee Committee allocations for fiscal year 2026. I move that the Board of Regents approve the allocations as recommended by the Vancouver Student Technology Fee Committee for fiscal year 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on establishing tuition rate for the University of Nairobi Joint PhD Biomedical Sciences Fee. I move that the Board of Regents approve the tuition rate for the Joint PhD Biomedical Sciences Degree in partnership with the University of Nairobi as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next action item is to vote on the proposed changes to the Washington Administrative Code 504-35 Facilities Use Rentals or Use Rules. I move that the Board of Regents approve the proposed revisions to the Washington Administrative Code, Chapter 504-35 Facility Use Rules for other than First Amendment and Free Speech Activities, as was explained yesterday.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The final action item is voting on the proposed changes to Washington Administrative Code 504-31 Conduct on University Property. I move that the Board of Regents approve proposed revisions to the Washington Administrative Code, Chapter 504-31 Conduct on University Property.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Just want to thank everyone again for your engagement and the very broad and long process to get us to this point. And that concludes the Finance and Administration Committee report. Back to you, Chair Shaw.
Thank you. I do want to reiterate, that was a fast 15 action items that have direct impact on our students. And so to follow on what Regent Powell mentioned, I think that it is really important that we're doing two things. One, analyzing the cumulative effect of tuition increases and fees as it relates to our student experience, as it relates to enrollment and retention. I also want to make sure that those that are watching, that are students that have provided us comments, we are listening to you. And we're trying to support those student groups that have brought to us the increase in the fees. We recognize the hardship of the cumulative effect, and we will continue to work on this with our senior leadership team. So while this was fast, it isn't because we're not taking it seriously or spending the time to talk about it. The next item that I do want to mention is, yesterday, March 6th, the Regents met in executive session to discuss with legal counsel litigation or potential litigation per RCW 4230110. As a result of those discussions, there will be no action taken today. The last thing that I do want to say is, we are seeing an immense amount of interest in watching our board meetings, and our words do matter. And so I do want to just appreciate and thank the Board for your continued commitment to being in this public space, to be able to engage with a commitment to civil discourse and recognize there's so much that we don't control and cannot influence. I also wanted to mention that we do receive all of the emails that come through the board box. We do review them, and we follow up. We also take seriously when you do show up and you spend time with the Board and you provide public comments. I know that I and Regent Ramos and Regent Dickinson have followed up. We try to take a look at each of the issues that come up, make sure that we are engaging with our senior leadership team and our president to make sure that we're understanding the issue and ensuring that we're clear that there's follow-up that has occurred. So thank you to everyone that continues to want to communicate with the Board. In the time that I've served on this Board, I have not ever seen a more active Board. Perhaps part of the reason that we felt wine was appropriate for you, President Schultz, we may have driven you a little to drinking, but that is because we care deeply about WSU, and we do want to be engaged at the right level, at the right place, at the right time. So thank you all again, our gratitude. We begin the Kirk Fest here relatively soon. Thank you all for being with us today. I will now adjourn the Board of Regents' meetings.